Yes, in fact, you saw one last year from the same property. This is a unique property where the city holds this restriction on these units exclusively. And I've been working with the realtor and the seller and identifying qualified buyers, eligible buyers for the unit, which all happened relatively recently. So I appreciate you taking this up so that the seller does not need to carry a mortgage and her rent throughout the summer. But yes, so this will allow the mayor to sign off on the right of first refusal and allow us to sell the property to an eligible buyer who is an affordable buyer at 80% of AMI.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. So before I entertain any discussion or questions, is there a motion to approve Order 191?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions from the council? Ms. Nguyen is here, of course, to answer questions as they may come up. All right, seeing none, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving Order 191?
Aye.
That carries nine zero. Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Nguyen, for joining us for that as well. Let's go to motions and orders, please, Ms. Kent.
Order number 77A, proposed amendment to Chapter 270 via vehicles and traffic as follows. Section 270-66 Downtown Beverly Parking District, B1 On-Street Parking Regulation Devices. C, the following on-street location will be regulated by parking devices unless specifically regulated otherwise in the downtown Beverly Parking District. Pleasant Street from Mintill Street to Park Street. And this is the final passage.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. Counselor Speng, this is your proposed ordinance. Anything that you'd like to say?
Okay.
All right. Counselors, this is for a second vote and final passage, as you heard Ms. Kent say. Is there a motion to approve 77A?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero. Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Speng, for your work on that. Order 163 is going to remain under motions and orders on our agenda. We'll carry over through the summer recess. And then we have Order 180, Ms. Kent.
Order 180, be obtained by the City Council of the City of Beverly as follows. In the year 2025, an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to Chapter 270, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 270-49, Off-Street Parking, Handicap Parking, amending Section 270-49 as follows. A handicap parking space to be placed at 27 Giles Ave. And this is also for final passage.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Order 180, this is your proposed amendment. Counselor Rotendo, anything you'd like to say?
I do want to say one thing specifically about the handicap spaces and how they're done administratively. We brought it to the Parking and Traffic Commission, but there's been a process put in place with applications of these. I think it's just putting some sort of a process annually, reviewing these licenses that are these spaces that are being put out. Sometimes people move, pass on, whatever the case may be. So I know there's some redundancy because they get into the ordinance and they sit there for a period of time. So I think it's a council maybe looking at that.
Thank you, Counselor. It's a great point. This is also available for a second vote, final passage this evening. Is there a motion to approve Order 180?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero. Thank you, Counselor Rotendo, for your work on that. I do know that we have Mayor Cahill with us. Mayor, thank you for joining us this evening. And we are now at the point where we can take up Order 171. Ms. Kent, thank you.
Order 171. Wait a minute. I wasn't expecting to read it. Can I see your agenda? That's okay. Order 171 from the Council of the Whole, oops. This isn't the right agenda. Mayor Cahill's FY '26 budget.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Kent. So I would, counselors, as we've done in the past when we've been considering the budget at this point, as, as you all know, but for those who are following along, just so that we're, have an overview of the process, the budget process actually begins much earlier in the year and ultimately has moved now over the past few months towards first, the school committee working on the school budget, holding a public hearing on the school budget itself. After that, the City Council gets a presentation of the entire budget inclusive of the school department's budget presented by Mayor Cahill. And then we have been considering that budget in our Finance and Property Subcommittee, thanks to the leadership of Finance and Property Chair, Counselor St. Hilaire. Thank you, Counselor. Working through that, having department heads be able to come in, having a chance to ask questions. Last Wednesday was the public hearing at the City Council level on the budget. We had a chance to hear from members of the public. Thank you to all those members of the public who came, participated, were here in chambers or watching online or sending us emails. It's an important part of our process. And we come now to the opportunity for the council to have discussion and ultimately to be able to, to vote on the budget. Potentially, part of the council's process would also include proposed amendments to make adjustments in the form of cuts to the budget. The council is not able to add money to the budget, but can propose amendments to cut. So what I'd like to do, this will be similar to the process we followed with the budget vote over the past several years. I'd like to begin in a moment by inviting you, Mayor Cahill, if you have anything that you'd like to, to say? No, okay. Invited, and you're good for now. So what I'll do, counselors, is I'll begin by asking if there are any, counselors who just like to make an opening statement. I did send an email, but if you didn't get it, just asking us all to hold our opening comments to five minutes or less, just for folks who are following. I think it gets hard to follow when we get much longer. I will let you know when you're nearing the end of your five minutes. That will not be the only opportunity for discussion. This is just the opening statement, and as there are nine of us, it feels like that gives space for us then to have the public be able to follow with us and to get into more discussion. From that point, we will then take, I'll take from counselors, any proposed amendments that you may have to the budget. If you would make your proposed amendment in the form of a motion, if the motion gets a second, that will allow us to then discuss that proposed amendment. And once we've had a chance to discuss and vote, if there's another amendment that a counselor would like to propose, please form it in the form of a motion, and then we'll go from there. So once we've had a chance to talk through any proposed amendments and vote on each of those in due course, we'll have a chance to discuss the, the budget in its entirety before we come to a final vote. So before we can do any of that, I'll take a motion to approve Order 171 to allow us to get into that process.
Second.
Thank you. Counsel, Counselor Housman, did you have a question? You're just ready to go. All right, well, I did see your hand first, so Counselor Housman, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. First, I'd like to thank all the members of the public who have weighed in on the proposed budget and members of the public who have watched the process on BEVCAM. Your engagement in the city's budget process, whether as a participant or observer, is important. I want to thank also the administration for its hard work on preparing this budget and the school committee and our budget analyst, Mr. Perry, for their work on the budget process. And finally, I want to thank my fellow city councilors for your thoughtful work and deliberations up to and including tonight's discussions. When our budget hearings first began, my first question was to Mr. Perry, who has advised us that the budget before us, the mayor's FY '20, '26 budget, will cause a structural deficit in FY '27. I asked Mr. Perry what action the council could take to make a material or meaningful difference in averting or mitigating the predicted structural deficit. He said we would have to cut somewhere between $800,000 and $1 million from this year's budget. I expect that some counselors will propose budget cuts tonight. Of those who will, I ask that they say upfront what the total amount of their cuts would add up to. I'll listen and consider their amendments with an open mind, but if it is less than $800,000, then I will not be inclined to support amendments to cut this budget as presented. While this may not be the budget I would prefer, I know that our finance director, Mr. Ailes and the mayor, and all of the city department heads have worked hard to nip, tuck, tweak, and tuck and squeeze this budget. The city side of the budget is, once again, essentially level funded. I do not see any egregious or even minor overallocations in the city's side of the budget. We can best prepare for the FY '27 budget between now and when it is presented a year from now by engaging with this administration or anyone in serious discussions about how we can restructure our revenues and expenses in a way that expresses our community values and budgetary factors as they evolve and present themselves. We've all heard from members of the public who would like the budget, who would like the council to have, to pass cuts somewhere, and it would have to be on the city's side of the budget. That could be, so it could be reallocated to the schools. But the school's side of the budget has been allocated 96.5 of all new revenues in this budget. Those who understand the city's charter, essentially our city constitution, know that we cannot direct where any cuts we might make would be reallocated. Such cuts might not be allocated as an expense at all, much less providing more money to the school department. This is not to dismiss the real concerns about matters in our school department. They need and deserve the council's attention. But the city council cannot realistically function as a substitute school committee, in my opinion, which in its own deliberations did not propose any amendments to the proposed school budget. Finally, as the council's liaison to the Clean Energy Advisory Committee, I would point out that the budget for the Sustainability Office, this budget, has been cut to fund one of its two, full to, one of its two full-time positions for only one half of FY '26. Like the Grants Office, the Sustainability Office is both a revenue center, center for the city, qualifying the city for ma, many clean energy grants, and it is a cost reduction center, helping to mitigate environmental damage to our infrastructure. It has proven its worth in both categories. With the changes in, with the changes and cuts in clean energy and climate resilience being made at the federal level, its work for the city is more important than ever. The entire Clean Energy Advisory Committee strongly supports the mayor's budget for the Sustainability Office for FY '26. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. And under four minutes, so well done. We'll all follow Counselor Housman's good example.
I practiced.
Oh, all right, you're timing yourself down there. Well done. Counselor St. Hilaire, and then Counselor Feldman, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening. As Chair of the Finance and Property Committee, I want to thank Mayor Cahill, Finance Director Brian Ailes, City Council Budget Analyst Jerry Perry, and all the department heads for their work and role in development and presentation of the mayor's proposed budget. Also want to thank Kim and BEVCAM for covering all of our hearings live, and also to all the residents who, who spoke at the public hearing and who have reached out in various ways. For the thirty in a row, I find myself inclined to vote no tonight on the mayor's proposed budget as it's submitted. At the end of the day, to me, this budget is not accurately addressing a lot of the priorities the residents I serve have. Our $173 million in total expenditures represents a historic level of spending, but yet we faced with cuts to our school system, a police force that, as the chief identified, is still 15% below national benchmarks for staffing and contains zero funding for road and sidewalk repairs. In terms of areas of misalignment for me, it starts with our school department. Last year was a historically bad year for our schools, a failure. That should have triggered, to me, a rethinking of our vision, our strategy, our approach as it relates to our schools. Dr. Chirocek acknowledged challenges in our middle school, in, which is notably the largest middle school in the state that's a grade five through eight configuration. Our, our middle school students are falling below state standardized testing benchmarks, and more and more families are leaving the district for other options. Yet the school department budget includes cuts to teachers in our middle school, to special education staff and administrators. Recently, the city council received a letter signed by thirty middle school educators expressing concern about the restructuring of the fifth and sixth grade team models. The frustration expressed in that letter demonstrates to me that serious issues remain regarding the state of our middle school and should be a concern to us all. Lastly, to me, I just can't connect in any way how our school department budget connects to a strategic plan that focuses on improving our middle school and also ensuring that our school district is competitive in the region. Public safety, another area of concern for me. Chief, again, has said this multiple years now, we are below benchmark in staffing by about 15%. He talks about officers routinely working 16-hour shifts. Call volumes going up. We know the world's more dangerous. We need to be investing in our public safety. Road and sidewalks, again, I disagree with the strategy of zeroing out the budget. We've talked a lot over the years about this. Budget analysts suggest $70,000 to $80,000 needed every year. It's a recurring need, should be in the operating budget, not subject to the whims of our capital plan. And lastly, you know, I, I'm opposed to tapping the excess levy capacity again, second year in a row that this is included in the budget to the tune of $700,000. Some residents, this is a, you know, a second year of, of big increases. Cost of living continues to increase. I just don't support further taxing our residents, and we can't sustain it. We're going to be at our, our limit. This is my eighth year serving as a, a counselor, eighth budget cycle. I filed many amendments over the years. Freezing salary increases, eliminating positions, consulting line items, travel expenses. You know, Mr. Ailes talks about safety valves. The reserve unforeseen has been a favorite of mine. As Counselor Housman points out, the city charter gives the responsibility of the budget to the mayor. He proposes it, it's his budget, he decides how to dictate, you know, what funds go to what department. His team determines the assumptions, they determine where the safety valves live, in, in what wiggle room they are comfortable with. We need to focus on our local priorities, and to me, this is not reflective of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Also excellent use of time, thank you. Counselor Feldman, and then we'll go to Counselor Bowen.
Yes, thank you. And thank you also to the entire Mayor Cahill and the administration and all the department heads that have been involved in this budget process because it has been a year. And, you know, I, although I'm open to line item reductions tonight, the fact of the matter is, they will not be substantial enough to fund the shortages we're facing in both the schools and the elimination of the roads and sidewalks, which are the two number one things that we hear about from our constituents and who are here to represent with their tax dollars here today. They are not at a sustainable revenue level to meet the long-term needs of our constituents. And the fact of the matter is, we, as a council, are responsible for passing a balanced budget by June 30th. And right now, if we do not pass a budget by June 30th, there is no other money to tap into. We can't send any budget line items back and ask for more money to appear out of nowhere. The budget is balanced and the revenues are where they're at. This, we have gone through in the last months, line by line, the department budgets, and like I said, I am open to some cuts, but this is a lean budget. The department heads did a really great job of really keeping this, understanding the financial kind of cliff we're facing with fiscal year 2027. So I admire their work in this, working on this together. Both things can be true, though. We can need to fund our schools better and address the issues that are prevalent at BMS, that I acknowledge, I'm the mother of two middle schoolers, well, actually, only one middle schooler now because one graduated on Friday. But we don't have the revenue on the city's side to support any more budget needs in the school department or the roads and sidewalks. And there seems to be a disconnect, even at that level, of what the teachers and parents think we need to fund versus the administration. So I'm not sure even the idea of just throwing more money at a problem that is policy-based is going to alleviate any of the infrastructure issues that exist in this environment. So I am looking at the opportunity of next year and next budget cycle to work with the new superintendent on a more collaborative process that can maybe address holistically the needs of the school. And a lot of these budget funding issues in the departments can be, can be done during the year with interdepartment transfers, or free cash transfers, or reallocations of funds. So this isn't like we can come up with more money. This is things that we can take care of and work to take care of as a community in the coming fiscal year. This is not a last-minute problem that we should rashly start from scratch with the budget process, and it's our responsibility to pass a budget, a balanced budget. As the Chair of Financial Forecasting, however, I am acutely aware of the compounding budget shortfall that we're facing in 20, fiscal year 2027. And the fact of the matter is, and I've said this multiple times this year, our expenses are outpacing our revenue. We are capped at a 2.5 property tax rate. I am very interested in coming up with new ways of finding revenue instead of decimating our lean city budget, because that is the answer. That is the only sustainable answer for our city, is to increase revenue to fund what we need done in our roads and sidewalks and our schools. So with that in mind, I have been working with President Flowers to support an override initiative that will hopefully be on the 2026 ballot, primarily to fill the funding gap in the schools and the roads and sidewalks line items. The time has come to consider a market correction, so to, like, for lack of a better term for it, for the outpaced percentage growth in expenses to meet the revenue side of the budget. And I believe it's time for the voters that we represent with those tax dollars to have a direct say in what those tax dollars are allocated for. So that is how I'm going into this budget process, and I hope to work with everyone on that process moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bowen, and then we'll go to Counselor Sweeney, please.
Thank you. I want to start with the same thanks that other counselors have shared and add, in addition to all of the city staff and members of the, the public residents and folks who work in Beverly who've shared their perspectives with us, also want to thank fellow counselors for really using this process, the annual budget process, to help create as wide a conversation as we can. I think it's been a very productive one already tonight. It's already off to a good start in that way as well. So just want to acknowledge, we are the most public piece of this process, where all the pieces come together and we're able to represent the whole city and, and weigh them. I wanted to add as well that the issues that we're facing are not entirely unique to Beverly. I just read today that the PBD City Council requested further information from their school committee over similar issues to what we're grappling with. Northampton Council declined to vote on the budget, which means that the mayor's proposal will pass, but it didn't pass their council. There are tools available in each community to, to figure this out, but we're dealing with similar challenges. As Counselor Feldman pointed out, across local government, our ability to provide services, the, the cost of those services and the people who provide them have kept pace with the inflation in our overall economy and the complexity of what we've seen the last few years, and our capacity as local governments to raise revenues has not. So the structural imbalance in our budget is a structural imbalance in most local governments right now, and we each have to figure out how we want to grapple with that. In some communities, there may be more capacity to pay property taxes. There may be more capacity to pay higher property taxes while shielding folks on fixed incomes from that gap. There may be interest in investing in more economic development that will bring in more commercial property taxes and revive that sector. There may be other ways of raising revenue, and, and I agree, we need to be looking at all of those. And I think we need to be looking at how we do business. So I, I sort of land in the same place, that the total number of dollars in this budget is what we can and should be spending, if not more, to, to get the services that we all rely on. And there are paradigm shifts happening in many of the services we provide that I don't think we've yet quite caught up to. So when we think about zero-based budgeting to figure out what it takes to provide the right kind of education and support to be able to really access that education in our schools, it looks very different now than during COVID, than pre-COVID, than when I was in school. And we are in the process of making those changes, but I don't think our budget and management quite yet reflect that. So I think there is a broader conversation to be had in several departments. You know, our, our Public Services Department came this year with a reorganization to help reflect changes that really had already been happening because infrastructure projects, costs are going up, maintenance costs are going up, it's really hard to, to hire and retain staff, and so the department is shifting. And we can have a broader conversation about how that happens, what we want to see as that happens. Use it not just as a, a sort of problem to solve, but an opportunity. We're going to be making changes anyways, we've been making changes anyways, how do we be really intentional about that? Our Public Safety Department's large growing part of our budget, even while feeling understaffed. And there are shifts in policing that can help reduce the burden on officers so that for the same number of dollars in a budget, you have more satisfied officers and public who are getting the services that they need. So I think looking at some of those things is going to be important as well. So for me, I think I'm, I'm comfortable voting for the top-line numbers that are in front of us if we are committed to having that further conversation. I'm also open, if there are proposals tonight, to make amendments to this budget that would force that conversation to happen more publicly, I'm open to that. Beyond that, I think there are, you know, proposals that, that may come up that I'm not going to support because I don't think they'll achieve that goal. And I think one way that we can think about having that conversation is to commit to starting our conversations about the next budget sooner. I know this fall will be busy, so early fall may not appeal to all the stakeholders involved, but by late fall, having a series of community meetings where we lay out not just the constraints, which we're all feeling very, very acutely, but the, the possibilities of how we might reshape some departments entirely or, or shape some policies differently, so we're doing that zero-based budgeting from a place of what do we want our services to look like going forward, not from a place of we can't afford what we want, so how do we get the next best thing? And I think this budget process has felt fairly heavy, and I would like us to go into the next one without some of that weight dragging down our decision-making, but actually with some space and some time to get more creative. So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Sweeney, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to start off by thanking Mayor Cahill, the members of the school committee, Dr. Chirocek and her administration, all of the city department heads, and all of the resident speakers who took the time to participate in the budget development process leading up to tonight. As Mr. Perry has noted, we're facing a structural deficit in FY '27. That's deeply concerning, but not surprising. Over the past two years, Mayor Cahill's budgets have relied on supplemental revenues from our excess levy capacity. If this budget is approved, that capacity will be fully expended within two years. That's why I proposed cuts last year and why I'll be proposing targeted reductions again this year. Depleting our excess levy capacity this fast places us on uncertain financial footing. Next year, we'll have no financial buffer. We'll either need to restructure how we deliver core services or consider reductions to staff capacity. Meanwhile, we have a school budget proposal that, despite a 9% increase, still falls short of addressing key challenges at Beverly Middle School. Dr. Chirocek has defended the investment reflected in this budget, but we've also heard from many educators and parents who believe that the district remains underfunded and are understandably worried about potential staffing reductions. I share those concerns. We need a plan to improve student achievement, reduce class sizes, ensure our in-district special education programs meet IEP requirements, and proactively address classroom disruptions. The challenge before us is how to pass a budget that is mindful of the looming fiscal deficit, considers the burden on Beverly's taxpayers, many of whom are being priced out of their homes, and takes meaningful steps towards investing in our public schools. However, given that we're just one week away from the start of the new fiscal year and that we only had three weeks to review the mayor's proposed budget, we have limited tools at our disposal right now. And to that point, I certainly want to echo Counselor Bowen's comments. I think it would benefit the entire community for us to start this conversation in a public manner much earlier than we have traditionally taken up the budget. As Mr. Perry said, we must pass a balanced budget to keep city government operating. It's ultimately up to the mayor and the administration to ensure that in the months leading up to the proposal, city government is structured efficiently and our school budget supports student needs. With limited time to deliberate, we must make the most of a tough situation. That's why I plan to propose strategic reductions that I believe are in Beverly's long-term interest. interest. If those reductions pass, the mayor can choose to retain the corresponding excess levy capacity for future years or submit a supplemental budget to address some of the school district's challenges. But that should not be the end of the conversation. My hope is that tonight's vote marks the beginning of a broader, community-wide process to assess our city's needs, reevaluate how city government and our school administration are structured, review whether our user fees and service charges are equitable and reflect the actual cost of services, and fourth, explore whether administrative capacity and programming in Beverly Public Schools can be restructured to prioritize staffing for teachers, paraprofessionals, and intervention specialists. I look forward to being part of that process and to the conversations ahead. Again, thank you to everyone who has participated in the budget development process. I look forward to tonight's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I think everybody else seems like they're going to hold for now. Okay, thank you. So we do have, thank you to the counselors who shared already, and we'll jump now into, as we have a motion and a second on the main order, that means that we can now take up proposed amendments. And so as I mentioned, counselors, if you are prepared to make an amendment proposal this evening, if you would do it by introducing it in the form of a motion, any motion that gets a second will then be something that we can take up discussion on, ultimately vote. We'll take one proposed amendment at a time so that we can keep track of the amendments. Any that pass then, of course, will become part of our main vote. Any that do not will not become part of the final vote. So are there counselors who are prepared to make? Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to amend the proposed FY26 budget to reduce the capital outlay account, which is account number 1422758757, and that's on page 83 of the budget, from $150,000 to
Thank you, Counselor Sweeney. Could you just repeat the reduction? I was just wanting to take notes on it quickly.
Yes, so the proposed amount is $150,000.
Thank you.
And if my amendment passes, that amount would be reduced to $0.
Thank you. That's what I thought I had, and I wanted to double check because I was writing it down. So is there a second on Counselor Sweeney's motion for discussion? All right, thank you.
Oh, and just to note, that's page 83.
Page 83 for those with the budget book, thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the proposed amendment from Counselor Sweeney. Is there discussion? Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. So this is the only reduction I see that will help us preserve some amount of our remaining excess levy capacity without impacting services. And the reason that I am proposing this reduction is that I do not think that this account is the right place to hold contingency funds for the McPherson Youth Center construction project. And so as we'll all recall, during the meeting with Commissioner Collins and Mr. Ailes, when questioned further about what the $150,000 was for, Mr. Ailes said that this is where the $150,000 contingency for the McPherson Youth Center, which is being funded, the construction is being funded through ARPA, is being held. And while I understand the rationale for that proposal, given the ARPA funding had an expiration date at the end of the calendar year, this past calendar year, if it was not contracted, I think that what would have been more appropriate would have been a free cash request that could have been made before the council and considered by this body. And then if that funding was approved but ultimately went unspent because the contingency wasn't needed, then the free cash, the funding could have been returned to free cash. And if this amendment is passed, given that we're going to quickly enter the new fiscal year and have a period of time between the start of the fiscal year and where free cash is certified, where we can appropriate free cash, so if this amendment is passed and contingency expenses for McPherson are ultimately necessary, those expenses can be paid for from our $225,000 reserve for unforeseen. We can then replenish that reserve if need be with an equivalent amount of free cash later in the fiscal year once free cash is certified. And so I state all that to show that I think this reduction does have an impact on our excess levy capacity. I don't think it inhibits our ability as a city to pay for contingency expenses for the McPherson Youth Center if need be. And then in terms of what this account is supposed to be for on paper, which is public services vehicles, I want to be clear that I support our hard-working Department of Public Services employees and the need to continually update the fleet so that we have the vehicles required for them to do their work. I think we should be building the funding for those vehicle replacements into the capital plan, and that way it would be a much more transparent process where the council could consider the full request of funding for specific planned vehicle replacements. And that way we could still, as I believe we all do, support those replacements, but also make clear to the community the cost for those vehicles instead of having a fund that has little oversight where vehicles are regularly replaced without much council input onto the larger planning process. So that is why I am proposing this reduction.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hausmann, I saw your hand, and then we'll go to Counselor St. Hilaire.
Yeah, just a brief question. Counselor Sweeney, can you, as I requested in my statement, tell me what, tell the council what the entire amount of all the budget cuts you're proposing add up to? Is it just this 150, or are there a number?
No, there's another proposal, if not proposed by one of my colleagues, that I would submit, and so the total would be a little over $210,000.
So $210,000 is sort of the aggregate of everything that you'll submit tonight as an amendment?
Yes, and I think that's an acknowledgement of the fact that this is a very lean budget.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor St. Hilaire?
I may have good news for you, Counselor Hausmann. With Counselor Sweeney's amendment, I am now over the threshold of your 800,000 with my proposed budgets that I have planned for tonight, so.
Okay.
Just to keep the conversation moving, I support this amendment. To me, this is another example of maybe one of these safety valves contained in the budget that could be funded other ways. Happy to hear the proposal from Counselor Sweeney, and I would be happy to support this.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there other questions, comments from counselors for discussion? Counselor Bowen, please.
Thank you. This is one that I'm sympathetic to in that it's a line that has come up in past years before I was on the council, while I've been on the council, as an area that is often budgeted at a certain level, and then through intra-departmental transfers that just happen throughout the year within the public services budget, increased or decreased based on needs. And while that is sound financial management, it is challenging when there is some areas of the budget, like this one, where that can happen throughout the year, sort of within the department by staff, and other parts of the budget that, you know, are equally important, that have to kind of battle it out for changes mid-year. And in particular, our capital plan has been a challenge for many of us to track from year to year how plans are evolving, how far ahead we are on planning towards known major expenses, and what the trade-offs are that we're making when we can't get ourselves to a position to make those expenditures when they're due. So it is an area of the budget that, you know, fluctuates wildly, goes up and down, and is that kind of catch-all area. I think of, for example, just through conversations at one of these budget hearings, we heard about the purchase of the infield groomer, $40,000 or so. As someone who doesn't play softball or baseball, I can't speak so directly to the impact of that one machine, but knowing that that is also a year of a paraprofessional in a school, you know, when you think about specific, like, we're not necessarily making that trade-off one-for-one, but when we put capital expenses in the operating budget in this way, and we don't map out what they're going to go to, and we don't treat them as that capital plan, that is really the trade-off that we're making. So to me, this is a proposal that looks at the structure of the budget and sends that signal that as a community, we may want to think about those things differently. The amount of money is not going to necessarily be able to restore key positions in the school department in this fiscal year or make a big change, but, you know, it's, I think it's something worth considering for that reason as a way to signal how we want to be making those decisions and plans as a community.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Feldman, then Counselor Hausmann, I saw both your hands.
Thank you. I have very similar sentiments to Counselor Bowen, and I'm also interested in considering this further, based structurally on what, how we like to look at the budget as a body in terms of planning, and also that it's not exactly enough to make a dent in some of the structural long-term imbalances, but I would be curious if we could hear Mr. Perry's input on this, or Mr. Ailes, if either one of you would like to give some.
Counselor President, that was my request.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I'd love to hear from both of them, if that's possible, yeah.
Thank you. So Mr. Ailes and Mr. Perry, there's a request to hear from both of you, so looks like Mr. Ailes is there first, and so we'll go to you, Mr. Ailes, and then Mr. Perry. Thank you.
I did want to just provide some additional information, so this is eyes wide open for everybody when this amendment is voted on. Since the last time we spoke about this particular line item, this is an ongoing project. So we've been down in the construction trailer, and they're talking about change orders for this project. There was additional pilings that needed to be driven beyond the originally anticipated level into the ground, so we're already beginning to eat into this contingency as we stand here today. We haven't signed those change orders yet, but the money is needed, will be needed, at least a portion of it, for the project. So if this does pass, I would just caution you all because in order to sign those change orders, we would be probably immediately coming back and requesting some source of funding to enter into those agreements, like, because they're ongoing. So just wanted to provide that insight.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Mr. Perry?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the councils. A couple of thoughts. I try really hard not to give you policy advice, I guess, this is somewhat policy, so I will not be recommending whether you should or should not do this. However, I do have cautioned you on a few things. First off, in my view, it's appropriate for the administration to park money someplace for a contingency for this project. We all understand we couldn't do it for the, do it because the ARPA closed, so this is where they decided to park it. Could you conceivably put it in, take it for free cash? Technically, yes, you can. That's certainly permissible. Keep in mind, you can't tap into that until we have free cash certified, which won't be till like November, December, and I wasn't even aware of Mr. Ailes' comment, and he's already, they're already getting into some of the contingency. I didn't know that till just a moment ago, but I got to caution you, I've said this before through these hearings, the way you handle your free cash is dramatically changing now with, as we're going forward with this budget and in the future, and the ability to do capital projects is going to be minimized because we're going to have to do roads and sidewalks, and we're putting more and more pressure on free cash. So you need to reflect upon that before you take your vote here. It is the right thing to do to have some contingency funds, so they did the right thing there, in my view. And finally, the question you have to ask yourselves is, if you decide to delete this, which is your prerogative, will you vote? Are the votes there, you have to look among yourselves, to transfer for free cash? I'm not going to speculate on that, that's up to the nine of you to figure that one out. Or if you're going to transfer for reserve for unforeseen, which we'll see how that plays out tonight, too, that seems to be an annual conversation, but if that's deleted, you're limiting your options here. So bottom line to it, we should have a contingency for a project like this. Where you park it is certainly up to you, but I hope you reflect upon those thoughts before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Counselor St. Hilaire?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Perry, your comment about the ARPA fund reminds me of the 180,000 that was spent using the ARPA funds for the public relations firm during the strike. That's not something any of us had visibility on at the time, in, you know, as far as maybe this money not being available right away for McPherson. I'm willing to take that risk, I guess, is what I would say.
Thank you, Counselor. I see some of your hands.
Was that a question or just a, thank you?
All right, thank you. Counselor Hausmann, then Counselor Sweeney, please.
I am in agreement with the council having more transparency on the way money is spent, and certainly interested in a conversation about where we put funds or allocate funds, say, whether it's in the capital expenditure plan or like this in the budget. I think that's a good conversation to have. I know all of us, I believe, have had frustrations at times with the lack of understanding and transparency, or lack of communication from the administration on how some of the monies are spent. Having said that, I also think it's important for the administration to have flexibility on ongoing projects. If the council is going to put itself in a position where contingencies have to be voted upon on a draw-by-draw basis and essentially become, I don't want to say, you know, project managers, but I think there's, I think it is appropriate for the administration to have flexibility in how it manages its contingencies on capital expenditure projects. I think the conversation that Counselor Sweeney has sort of kicked off is a worthwhile one having. I don't know that, given Mr. Ailes' information, that they're already looking at the possibility of needing to do this right away, puts, makes this an appropriate time to look at this particular line item, given that there's a, you know, many of us have said there's sort of a structural conversation we want to have in terms of how we allocate expenses and revenues. We certainly had that conversation when we were very clear with the administration that they needed to come to us on a regular basis. I'd suggested monthly, they're doing quarterly, but in any event, coming to us on a regular basis with reports. They've started to do that, and so, given the timing of this as a conversation topic, I'm not sure, I don't think I would support the amendment, although I appreciate the initiative and the intention behind it. I guess I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. To Counselor Hausmann's comments, I certainly appreciate and understand the need for the administration to have the flexibility required to pay for contingencies as they arise, and I understand it's a best practice to budget specifically for contingencies with these construction projects, but this is fundamentally the series of costs, the contingencies tied to the McPherson Center construction are one-time expenses, tied to a one-time construction, and I do not believe that this vehicle of including funding in the operating budget under the guise of the line item that otherwise funds public services vehicles replacement is a good financial practice. That's why if we could have gone back, I would have suggested to the administration to come forward with a free cash transfer. I would have voted in favor of that. I am presuming that many of my colleagues would have as well, and that funding would have already been set aside, available for contingencies, and whatever was left unspent would then have reverted back to free cash upon completion of the project. Because that didn't happen, and we're at the point that we're at the end of the fiscal year, I still see a way for us to reduce this budget and allow for those expenses to be paid for out of the reserves for unforeseen. To Mr. Ailes' point, that would require an additional meeting. I would be more than willing to have that meeting and approve that transfer so that we could make the change that needs to be made now in the operating budget to remove a line item that really is a capital expense. And that's where I think Counselor Bowen very eloquently outlined why it is important for both transparency, but then a good financial practice to have a multi-year capital plan that outlines these expenses so that both the council and the public can get a better understanding of how we're thinking long-term about our vehicle fleet replacement, our building replacements, and the whole other slew of capital projects in this city. Right now, we don't have that. We have a narrative document that outlines a laundry list of projects, puts an estimated price tag, but otherwise doesn't make clear when the administration plans to bring a proposal forward to fund that project. And so I think if we're serious about wanting to increase transparency in this city and wanting documents like a multi-year capital this city, and wanting documents like a multi-year capital plan that would more clearly outline the plan for funding these expenses, then we, as a council, need to use the levers that we have to enforce the situation where the administration would need to react and come forward with a plan for vehicle replacements that would be vetted with, in a much more thorough manner. And so, this is one of the opportunities we have as a council, to use our lever, in this instance, by reducing this budget to zero, still allowing for, through the reserve for unforeseen, those contingencies to be paid, and then putting the ball in the court of the administration to come back to the council with free cash or other funding requests as part of the capital plan, to pay for the vehicle replacements that we all know are necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hausmann, I think you had maybe a conversational response. I see Counselor Feldman.
Yeah, I just kinda wanted to, to, so Counselor Sweeney, to your own words, you said, you know, we're sort of already here, and we can't sort of redo the process of developing this budget. If we were to do what you're suggesting, which again, I, you know, I, I, I think it's a good conversation to have, and I look forward to having it as we go forward, what do we do? You're, it, it's not gonna put the contingency for the McPherson Center in the capital expenditure plan now. We're not gonna be amending as part of this budget process, amend, we're not gonna be amending the capital expenditure program, project now. So, this is sort of a, if I follow you, sort of a, an ad hoc, after-the-fact way of, of achieving something that I think is worth exploring, doing in the future. And so, I, again, I kinda feel like we should adopt this as a, as a, as a working project going forward, but that this is not the time and place to, to do this, given where the project is.
Thank you. Counselor Sweeney, I know you wanna get in here. Counselor Feldman, and then we'll come back.
Very quickly.
And I wanna get to Counselor Spang, too.
Similar to Counselor, what Counselor Hausmann just said, I, I do agree with your assessment of the capo, and, and moving forward this. But for right, for right now, it seems like we're just moving, we're creating the need for another meeting to move money from our right hand to our left hand in this budget, and I just, it seems like it's more punitive than it is effective in terms of the budget, where it currently is right now. And I, I really, I do appreciate you bringing this forward, because it is a good conversation to have for next year's budget, and for getting ahead of these things, and stating out loud that I think regardless of where we fall on this, I think all of us would like to see this, would rather see this. It seems like the majority of us would prefer to see this in a different line item in the future and planned for differently. So, that is my, similar to Counselor Hausmann's takeaway, in that it, it doesn't seem like it's structurally appropriate at this point, because the process is where we're at now. But I do appreciate this conversation and this thought process moving forward.
Counselor Sweeney, would you be okay if we go to Counselor Spang, just as she hasn't had a chance to get in here, and then we'll come back, and Counselor St. Hilaire, I see you. Counselor Spang?
Thank you, Madam President. Most of my comments were covered by Counselor Feldman, but I also just wanted to note that, at least in the last fiscal year, this account was spent quite a bit over what was budgeted for it. So, I feel like even if we cut the budget for this line item, it doesn't stop spending from happening in this category, if that makes sense. So, I appreciate the need to have a more robust conversation about the capital improvement plan, but I'm not sure that I would support cutting this line item tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Spang. Counselor Sweeney, and then Counselor St. Hilaire. I see Counselor Bowen, and then I'm feeling like we're landing in a place that we're probably ready to vote on this one shortly.
And I agree with you, Madam President. So, I'll kind of address those points, and then bring my comments to a close.
Thank you, please.
So, to the points raised by Councilors Feldman and Hausmann, to map out if this amendment was approved, what would happen from here. So, to the point that Mr. Ailes made, there would need to be some meeting at some point in time, probably sooner rather than later, based on the summary of work that Mr. Ailes just gave us. To transfer money, I would guess that the administration would propose it, come from the reserve for unforeseen, because we probably have to be into the fiscal year by the time we got a transfer. So, yes, in this one instance, it would be seemingly removing money from the budget, only to then have money taken out of the reserve for unforeseen and placed into an account to fund these contingency expenses. But what would happen going forward is that then the capital outlay line, which funds the public services vehicles, would be reduced to zero, and that means, and this kinda gets to the point that Counselor Spang brought up, proposed spending to replace vehicles, which is ultimately the purpose of this account, would need to come through a supplemental appropriation, likely a free cash proposal at some point later in the fiscal year, once free cash is certified. And that proposal would need to be vetted by the council. We would have the opportunity to ask, why is this vehicle being replaced now? What is the plan for future vehicle replacements? What is the magnitude of the public services fleet in terms of dollars? And how do we plan to stay up with replacements annually, so that we don't fall behind and have a year where half the fleet breaks down at once? Those conversations don't happen right now on the city council. And to the point about, we can, you know, this is a great idea, but let's wait until next year. I proposed this cut last year. It was not approved by the council, and here we are in a different situation. And I say different because now, instead of vehicles being funded through this item, it's a contingency fund, a clear one-time expense. And so, yes, in this one instant, there would be a seeming moving of the money, where we pull it out of this account, only to need to appropriate from the reserve for unforeseen in a matter of weeks, most likely. But that would correct what I view as a misalignment between funding coming from the operating budget for what should otherwise be a capital expense, that we could utilize free cash or other funding sources for, and have the benefit of then a much more public process to consider the expenses, and hopefully that would help spur the administration to put a multi-year capital plan together, which is something that I've been advocating for, for most of my time on the city council. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Sweeney. Counselor St. Hilaire, and then Counselor Bowen, and then I think we may be ready.
Thank you, Madam President. Just real quick, I, I'm just reacting to some of the sentiment I've heard about, sort of the lousy situation we're in as a council, as it relates to forming the budget and, and having an impact on it, and, you know, also the calls for, you know, a renewed, you know, approach to our budget process. And I would just suggest, if, if our budget process hasn't changed since the year we had last year, I'm not too confident that, that we could expect a whole lot of change moving forward. And, you know, as far as the role that we play, this is what it is. And I think we can either sit back and pass it as it is, or we can make cuts with the hope in a recommendation that, that it be spent on priorities that, that we see as more, more fit. And so, you know, I recognize that anything I cut tonight, you know, I can't, I'm not gonna get what I want out of this budget in terms of my priorities, but hopefully, we can send some message and, and, and return some dollars, if, if not all, all of my cuts, to, to do something.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. I, I look at it sort of in the same way as Counselor Spang, and reach a somewhat different conclusion, which is, given how much restructuring there is already in the public services budget, I would not be at all surprised if the, we need to tap some funds from what was previously the public property is now maintenance, or another area within that budget early in the year through an intra-departmental transfer to cover relatively minor costs of youth center that I think we've all been very vocal in supporting, and are pleased to be using ARPA funds for. And, you know, personally, I would support transferring funds if needed from somewhere else to do it. But it does feel like an area where there are healthy enough supply lines or other lines that might be able to be used for a change order here or there, in the time between now and when free cash is certified. Gives us incentive to try and get through that free cash certification early as well. You know, another, another budget line in public services could be replenished later, just as the reserve for unforeseen or other areas could. So, to me, the fact that spending has happened in this line over the years, throughout the year, indicates that when push comes to shove, if we need that to get a building opened for our young people on time, we'll, we'll find a way to do it. And I think it, it is important to lean into the role that each of us plays, and, you know, when we think about wanting to see different priorities reflected in future budgets, it's true, we have limited ways to do that, and, and just talking about it has not helped us catch up as fast as, as I would like. So, so I'm, I'm, you know, leaning towards being in favor of this after the, the discussion, because I feel like it, to me, does not sound like it jeopardizes the McPherson Youth Center project, may make it more complicated, and that process is part of what will force us to, to grapple with, with some of the bigger things. So, that, that slight discomfort, I think, is well worth it, and I think helps us get to that point of, of really grappling with the seriousness of the, the budget situation we're all in, and we're not alone in, and helping us think about it more creatively. So, so I hope that that comes not as a punitive measure, but as a real demonstration of seriousness in, in our roles.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hausmann? Yes, Mr. Perry, there's a question for you, please. What's your question for Mr. Perry, Counselor?
Mr. Perry, you've heard the discussion up here, and a lot of it is centered on the idea that structurally, using the capital expenditure plan would be a more helpful, or an augmented role for it would be more helpful for the council in achieving transparency with this, when we're facing these kinds of questions. Does that, what, what's your opinion about whether the capital expenditure plan is, is an appropriate vehicle for, for achieving that?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I haven't got it in front of me here, in my recollection is we did, the administration did articulate the McPherson Center and the capital project plan. So, it was there. And I remind you, a capital project plan, it's a plan. It's a tool to look at and to help you determine how to handle your funds. What we have before us tonight now is implementation. You gotta do something, you know? I mean, if, if we need contingency, it's really a question of, as I told you earlier, it's appropriate to have contingency funds for this project. That's best practices, that's common sense in this business. The administration chose to put it in this line item. That's just what they chose to do. As I indicated to Mr., Counselor Sweeney, you could conceivably do it with the free cash, too. It's not that you can't do that. They could have done it with the existing free cash. I mean, there's, there are options there, but as far as a plan goes, the, I think was in the plan, I think it did what it was supposed to do, from my perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sweeney, this is your proposal, so we'll go to you, and then we have a motion in a second.
Yes, I'll be very quick, Madam President. To be clear, my issue is not that the McPherson Center was not in the capital plan. It's that none of the public vehicle, public services vehicle replacements are in the capital plan. And that's ultimately what this account on paper is supposed to fund. So, that's, I don't know if there was confusion there, Counselor Hausmann, but that's where, in talking about the need for transparency in a capital plan over multiple years, it's specific to the vehicles, not to the McPherson Center that I'm referring. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sweeney. So, we do have a, oh, Counselor Rotundo, no, you haven't gotten in here yet.
Mr. Perry, just for clarification purposes for me, you know, I like to do that. If it's to be voted to be decreased by the 150 and zero, it still could go anywhere within the budget, it could do nothing, it could sit around. I just, process-wise, we can't tell the mayor where to put that money, correct? So, I know there's been talk of the excess levy capacity of roads and sidewalks, or something like that. We don't have the authority to instruct, we can try to, you know, ask him to do it, but necessarily, the mayor does not have to follow our will, correct?
Correct. And so, if the decision is to pass this amendment, the reduction would be to zero, as we know, and you can ask the mayor to do something with that money, but then, one, the mayor has to decide to do it, and two, he's gotta submit it to the council for approval.
Okay, thank you. Just for clarification.
Thank you. Counselor St. Hilaire?
I would just suggest to Counselor Rotundo that that would, that would be his call, right? And, and I think, and my view of that is, we're doing our job in, in hopes that, you know, he takes some action, and that, and that's all we can do.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on Counselor Sweeney's proposed amendment. So, all those in favor of the reduction from 150,000 to zero in this line item? Aye. All those opposed? So, that motion fails four to five. Thank you. Is there another, Counselor? Counselor Sweeney, you mentioned you had another proposal. I don't know if you want to go to yours, and then we'll go to Counselor St. Hilaire, who, I know you mentioned you have some as well, Counselor?
I would be happy to, Madam President. Thank you. So, my next proposal is to reduce the budget for the Assistant Sustainability Director, and that is account number 1121151180, and that is on page 18 of our budget book. And I am proposing to reduce this budget from $60,839 to $0.
So, thank you, Counselor Sweeney. I know it's gonna sound like a real technicality. Would you just make your proposal in the form of a motion?
Uh, yes. So, I move to amend the proposed FY26 budget, to reduce the Assistant Sustainability Director account from $60,839 to $0.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Is there a second on that one? Thank you. Is there any discussion, or Counselor Sweeney, would you like to kick us off?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President. So, as we've discussed here tonight, we're facing a structural deficit in FY27, and I just don't see any way, with that structural deficit in mind, and the fact that we are currently underfunding the Sustainability Director position in this proposed budget, that we can keep both of these positions full-time, year-round, beyond FY26. And so, as I mentioned, the Sustainability Director, which has a salary of north of $100,000, in this proposed budget, it's being funded at $53,500. And so, once the position is filled, if this budget is proposed as presented, the mayor indicated that his hope would be ideally to fill it sooner than January, but the funding is there for January, once that position's filled, then we would need to find room in the FY27 budget for the full Sustainability Director salary, plus the full Assistant Sustainability Director salary, which would be, in this fiscal year, fully funded on the city's operating budget, as we're entering into the last phase of the grant funding that helped make this position possible. And additionally, I think it's worthwhile to consider that one of these two positions is currently vacant. As we know, the Sustainability Director position is vacant. And since it will be incredibly difficult for us to find the funding as a city to sustain both positions going forward, I believe that it would be wise for us to reduce funding for the second position now, knowing that it's not a sustainable model for us to retain both positions in the future, and then recalibrate the capacity of the Sustainability Office to just the work of the one position. And again, to be abundantly clear, I do think it is worthwhile that we, as a city, continue to move forward on our sustainability initiatives, especially as a coastal community. We can all see firsthand the impact of climate change, and the need for us to continue our coastal resiliency efforts, which I know the Sustainability Office has moved forward, especially on Lynch Park, but then also in terms of continuing to work to reduce carbon emissions in our municipal buildings. I think we've all, even though we voted differently on a handful of projects, have all stated that we want the city to continue moving in that direction. I believe that we can do that with just the one sustainability position. And I believe that because we have a very talented grants director, and we have an engineering team with a capacity to help assist the Sustainability Office in some of these major initiatives. And specifically on the grants director, having that capacity there to bring in additional funding, even if that funding is going to be likely limited in the future, is a real benefit, not only to the city, but to the work of each department, including sustainability. And in addition to the capacity we have in-house here as a city, we have a very active nonprofit partner in Green Beverly, and I see some members of Green Beverly in the audience, and certainly appreciate you all taking the time to attend tonight. And we also have a volunteer clean energy advisory committee filled with industry professionals, and I think we could better leverage their experience. So, I believe that with that nonprofit organization in place in Green Beverly, with active volunteers on the Clean Energy Advisory Committee, and with the capacity in addition to the Sustainability Director within City Hall, I think the infrastructure is there for us to continue moving these initiatives forward. And so, with that in mind, I view this reduction more as a financial matter, and the need to look reality in the eye, and that we are facing a structural deficit, and if we are to fund both of these positions at full salary in FY27, we're gonna have to make a cut somewhere else, because the two positions are not fully funded in FY26. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Feldman, and then we'll go to Counselor St. Hilaire.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I am very interested in sustainability and making sure we are staffed at the appropriate levels for a sustainable... becoming a sustainable green community and for the future of the city. However, I understand this is also a numbers... This is a tough budget year. And looking at it, not from my earthy crunchy green background of caring about the earth, I did have a question for either, I believe, Mr. Ailes. My main question is, I know that when I worked with... I worked with Arena when, back when it was fully staffed, when it was Assistant Sustainability Director in a full-time, and she was swamped and so was the Assistant Sustainability Director. And they integrated with every department professionally beyond... I appreciate, obviously, Green Beverly and our Clean Energy Advisory Committee and all the work wonderful volunteers do. But fact of the matter is, we need all hands on deck for this type of... And the city needs to make a commitment. But my question for Mr. Ailes is, would you say that when we were fully staffed, that between the Sustainability Director and the Assistant Sustainability Director, did they recoup $200,000 worth of savings for the city in terms of across the different departments? Or Mayor Cahill, if anyone that could answer the dollar number that you can assign to the savings that they... Because this budget is about... I am very interested in generating revenue, and this is one of the line items that I see as a revenue generator in that creative funding for our schools and for our roads and sidewalks. And so if we can't look at these line items and invest in things that generate revenue for the city, then we might as well just say we can't pay for anything. Because that's what I want to do with our budget moving forward. So if you have a number, that would be great.
Mayor Cahill, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Madam President. It's good to be here with you all tonight. I do want to thank all of our department heads and other staff who are with us this evening. They do incredible work. They have done incredible work with Mr. Ailes and me in putting this proposed budget together. It's a strong, sound budget. Ms. Barrett is a magic maker, and yet she is human. She searches out and finds grants. She writes grants. She gathers data and reports on grants so as to stay in good stead with grantors who may fund us in the future. She is a support for small nonprofits in the community who don't have the capability on their own. She does incredible work every day of the year. She is aided in that work by subject matter experts from various departments and certainly on the sustainability front by the subject matter experts that we have had in that department. So with that said, we currently are working with 2.9 million dollars in federal and state grants that we secured and that the Sustainability Director had a significant role in working with Ms. Barrett and working with a number of us across several departments and in working with our colleagues in the school department. But I will say that the point person on that project from the start was Ms. Keefe. And we were able to secure 2.9 million dollars in federal and state grants, $320,000 in direct pay tax credits. And right now, there's a pending request to the state for additional funds for purchasing bidirectional chargers as opposed to single directional chargers. And you remember, we've talked about the vehicle to grid, the ability to use the fully-charged batteries during the peak demand times in the summer, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. on really hot days. And we're able to sell that electricity from those batteries into the grid and then recharge them at a, you know, quieter, cheaper time. So we may end up, you know, securing those type of chargers for this project as well. Point is, we're getting eight new school buses. School buses that are going to not burn fossil fuels, that are going to not put particulates into the air for the kids that are waiting for the bus, getting on the bus and getting off the bus to breathe in. Eight brand-new, five full-size and five, what you call mini, half-size buses, for no city money. If we did not get these grants, we would be spending over $1 million for five diesel Type C or full-size buses and three Type As. So that's just in the here and now. I will say also that we, you know, just giving you a few examples of grants that I know that our sustainability team has helped to make reality. Let's see, the Lynch Park grant of $325,000 that has helped us understand our vulnerabilities and start to put together some, a plan to move forward. We got a grant for $75,000 a few years ago to plant trees as a way to decrease urban heat in our Gloucester Crossing neighborhood, to provide more tree canopy and to, you know, to cut down on that cooking factor that happens on those really hot days when the sun's beating down in the summer. We also got coastal resilience grants for the Water Street Pump Station and Obere Park. We're working through those processes, as you know. Grant funding is hard to come by, and we'll be going after more grant funds for both the Lynch Park and the Obere Park projects. And in those cases, the Assistant Sustainability staff person has been running point on those all along. In addition to the money brought in, there are the opportunities that we haven't had to take a pass on. National Grid was offering to... They were offering a project to swap out incandescent LED lights last fall and winter. We were able to transition to LED lights at all of our schools that didn't have them. And I think it's everything but the middle school. I'm looking at the commissioner. It was all the schools but for because we already had done it with the new middle school project, and it was, I believe, the senior center. So over the course of the winter, and Ms. Keefe was the point person, along with Jake Pike from DPS, they together ran point on a really complex project that was... That allowed us to take care of... To take advantage of something that was time-limited and National Grid was putting a lot of expertise into. Ms. Keefe was the point person on the multi-site solar project, which took several years. These things are highly complex, and they don't get done by one person alone. But she ran point on a really complex project over several sites that involved interconnection challenges with National Grid at all six campuses that involved a lot of complexity throughout it all. So there have been grants coming in each year, thanks to the work of these folks. And I'll say one last thing on that. This is not grant money, but we have had an angel... An angel donor, right, who has put $480,000 of their own money into the city accounts to support these two positions. And, you know, this is all a... This is not a requirement, but certainly this individual paid 80% of the cost of each of these positions in year one, 60% in year two, and 40% in year three. And in fact, in FY26, and you see it in your budget, the assistant position is still going to be paid 40% of their salary for the first 42 weeks of the year before that three-year term runs. The work is critically important. The work is more than enough for a two-person team. And yes, they have been helping to bring in money at a return to justify their work, even though their work doesn't need money to be brought in to, you know, to really justify. They do incredibly important work, and they do it at a high level. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And that was not to minimize the work that they do, even if they did not bring in revenue. But since this is the budget meeting, that's why I was focusing on that.
Thank you, Counsel Feldman. I think the order that I have, you all, Counsel St. Hilaire, Hausman, Bowen, and everybody else.
Thank you, Madam President. The executive office staff is an area of the budget that has increased significantly over the last 10 years. Vat and Chief Staff, Constituent Services Director, Grants Director, Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Director in two sustainability roles. I think it is time to rethink staffing levels in the mayor's office. I do support this amendment and was planning on offering an amendment that was expanding of this, included several of the other positions in the mayor's office, including the Constituent Services Director in both sustainability positions, the DEI position, as well as the Associate Planner in the Planning Department. These positions total $331,000. We're cutting teachers, special educators, administrators in our middle school. We're understaffed in our police department. We can't afford these positions as much as we would all love to have everything. So I certainly support this. But I also, counselors, want you to think collectively about the thought I had about a future possible amendment because to me, they are a package deal in with a desire to get some funding for some other roles. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Hausman and then Counsel Bowen are the hands I had seen.
There's a lot to cover here, so I'll start narrow maybe and then go wide. Counsel Sweeney and I have had this conversation on and off for a while. And so I find myself, I guess, to a degree, kind of repeating myself, but not necessarily for all of the listening public. You know, the work of the Sustainability Office, I think, is urgent as a matter of public policy. But I take Counsel Sweeney's point that we face tough budgetary decisions going ahead, and we are going to need to try to figure out structurally the best way to get work done. One of the points that Counsel Sweeney made in sort of arguing for this cut, proposed cut, is that the Engineering Department could fulfill some of the role presently... Some of the responsibilities presently exercised by the Sustainability Office. Just sort of a point of fact, we have a cemetery master plan that's been limping along for a couple of years. And I submitted six pages of comments to that plan last month. And the reply I got back from the Engineering Department was, well, we're pretty busy right now. It's a busy season. Maybe in the fall, we can get to this. So that is not intended to be a slight to the Engineering Department. I think they are busy. I think this is their busy time. But the point is that I think the Engineering Department is pretty tapped out themselves when it comes to how they manage the responsibilities they have. And I don't know that... Or I guess I would assert that that's not a sufficient model or appropriate model to act, standing alone, as a supplement to a single position in the Sustainability Office. To the mayor's point, I mean, I think I understand that engineering is technical, sustainability is technical, but the technicalities are not necessarily the same, you know, the same skill set, the same knowledge set. On the question of, well, we have Green Beverly, we have the Clean Energy Advisory Committee, there are a lot of committed people with a lot of expertise included in these specific fields. I don't think the city can rely on Green Beverly for all the great work that it does to fulfill the implementation role of the various technical projects that are going on in the Sustainability Office right now that the mayor described. And I certainly know that the Clean Energy Advisory Committee can provide a supporting policy role, but there is no way, and they will tell you this themselves, that they can fulfill a implementation role or a project management role for the work that's done in the office. So they're very important partners, I think, for the Sustainability Office, but they are no substitute for the work that gets done there. So really, we're talking about a capacity question here of, do we need one person? Do we need two persons? Two people? And that brings us back to the point I made in the beginning, which is, unless we're making $800,000-plus cuts to this budget, and it sounds like we're going to have a conversation about those, we, you know, this... Why are we picking on this one position there? I mean, we talked about, Counsel St. Lera talked about it, the, I believe, the Assistant Planner position. You know, in Salem, and I don't like to compare cities, but I mean, Salem, the numbers I hear are, you know, upwards of 10 or more in their planning department. You know, we have four comparable cities. I just don't think it's realistic to think that we can get the work done with one person. And as I said in my opening statement in anticipation of this proposal, you know, just repeating what the mayor said, this office, I think, is a revenue center. It's more than paid for itself and its salary. It allows us to leverage grant funds as well from the anonymous donor. It also cuts costs. It's a cost-cutting center for the city. So I think it's pennywise and pound foolish to try to take this position and essentially leave it vacant for... Leave the office vacant in position for six months while we have these ongoing projects that are going on. So I think it's an important conversation. We are going to have to in this next year, echoing a number of my colleagues, we are going to have to, as a council, start the budget process as soon as we... For FY27, as soon as we pass this one, because we've got some deep and important structural questions to tackle. But in the meantime, for the reasons I just said, I just... I will vote in opposition to this proposal.
Thank you, Counsel Hausman. So the order, I've got Counsel Bowen, who's been waiting, and then Counsel Sweeney, I saw you, and then Counsel St. Hilaire. So we'll go back. Oh, you're okay? Okay. Not Counsel St. Hilaire at this time. So Counsel Bowen and then Counsel Sweeney. We'll come back to you. Counsel Bowen.
Thank you. And I know when this has been raised in the past, I shared many of the comments already, shared and those views that these are positions, I think, to what I sort of opened with, I think these are positions that actually demonstrate the city keeping pace with the changing world around us and thinking about a way to restructure city positions to provide services in a way that we need them now and in a really cost-effective way because they are also helping us identify savings and bring in additional revenues for projects that we need. And one that hasn't been mentioned but that I think is important to think about, we've identified through this budget series and before that our waste contracts and how we handle our waste and sanitation contracts are a budget issue. And I think the Sustainability Team and several of our wonderful volunteer committees are really important in figuring out how we, as a city, manage waste more cost-effectively and environmentally friendly. So that's an area, I think, if we are to cut back, we will end up paying more for worse outcomes in the long run. And so in addition to all the others already raised, I think that's an area where we'll see the benefit of being ahead of this one and adapting as we need to. So I support keeping both positions. I agree, actually, seeing the cut to a half-year is, I think, hard to stomach. And so cutting further, I think, would be worse.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. And I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. I just want to clarify, I am not proposing this reduction because I disagree with the action that the city has taken to become a more sustainable city. I think that many of the projects that the mayor mentioned are worthwhile projects, and I'm glad to see that we've accomplished them. I know it was mentioned that, and I believe Counsel Hausman, you mentioned it, even in comparison to some others from municipalities, Beverly's sustainability staff is smaller. But you could also make that same comparison to many municipalities that are moving the ball forward on sustainability initiatives with either one or zero dedicated staff members. Usually, the zero dedicated staff members are smaller municipalities, like the town I work in, the town of Oxford. But in Oxford, we've moved to a municipal aggregation plan. We negotiated a new trash contract to reduce tonnage. We manage a solar field that helps to utilize energy credits from the field to decrease essentially how much we're paying for electricity and utilizing that clean energy. So it's... The reason I bring that up is to make clear that it's not, in my mind, a conversation about should we move backward on these initiatives and if we reduce... And if we reduce this one position, are we punitively targeting an area of city government that we, as a council, are saying we don't agree with? That is not at all my intention in proposing this cut. The reason that I'm proposing this cut is that I do not see the way that these two positions are structured currently in this budget as financially sustainable, given the fact that we're facing a fiscal cliff in FY '27. And I thought it was interesting that the mayor spoke so passionately about the importance of having both positions, yet he submitted a budget to us that only funds six-month worth of the full Sustainability Director position. To me, that's kicking the can down the road. And if you are so passionate about the need for both positions, and I can understand why, I don't see why you wouldn't fully fund both positions in this budget so that that base is built in there to maintain in the future, if the commitment has already been made that both positions are absolutely necessary for the city to move forward on its sustainability initiatives. Instead, what we're looking at potentially is a scenario where if this budget is passed as approved and the mayor proceeds with a plan to fill the Sustainability Director position, we then need to cut at least $53,000, if not more, once the full salary of the Assistant Sustainability Director is built into the base of the budget from some other aspect of city operations, whether that be public services, police, fire, the schools. When faced with that reality, which is we're looking at a structural deficit, the positions in this offer, in this department are not fully funded, then it becomes a different conversation. Then I think we need to turn from looking at whether or not the initiatives are worthwhile, which I think all nine of us agree are, to is this model sustainable? And I don't think it is. I think we're already going to face pressures in the coming fiscal year from increasing health insurance expenses, from the reality of our collective bargaining agreements, which pay well-deserved wage increases, but wage increases that outpace the 2.5% growth of our tax levy. And then I don't think it's wise for us to assume that on top of that, we're going to somehow be able to squeeze in another $60,000 that's not in the budget for these two positions to maintain them in FY '27 and beyond. I think what's more likely is that we'll bring somebody in to fill the Sustainability Director position, and then the decision will need to be made, do you immediately let that person go? Do you let the Sustainability Director go, and this is when you're forming the FY '27 budget? Or do you keep those two positions and cut back on police officers or firefighters or teachers or public services workers or any other aspect of our municipal budget? If we were to reduce, as I have proposed, the salary of the Assistant Sustainability Director, I would hope that the mayor would submit a supplemental budget request to fully fund the Sustainability Director line item and then potentially even consider looking internally to promote so that we can fill and build the career growth for somebody who has already done a lot of good work for the city and avoid a scenario where we're hiring someone in January and firing them at the end of June because the FY '27 budget can't support their salary. So to be abundantly clear, that's what I'm looking at when I'm proposing this cut, not a desire to move away from what I think have been very positive steps that the city of Beverly has taken to become a more sustainable community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Housman, and then I'm sensing that we too might be ready to vote on this one. Councillor Housman, please.
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, I don't usually carry water for the mayor and the administration on such matters, so maybe he or Mr. Ailes will step up at some point on this, but on this particular question. I guess I, and also, I want to acknowledge that I understand from our conversations that you are not diminishing the importance of the Sustainability Office. I understand that. And so I'm glad you're sort of clarifying that for yourself. I don't want to say that for you. But I understand that, and what you're trying to do is try to figure out a rational way to address the projected structural deficit, you know, and look in some of these positions. I would guess I would say, you know, I'm not sure why this position, out of all the positions, wouldn't necessarily do that. But the, so a couple of points. One is, the position, I believe, pays for itself already in terms of salary by the grants that it brings in. But I've also lost my train of thought. I'm not even that old yet. So the, it's not coming back. So maybe the mayor will help out here a little bit.
May I? I brought my own water up, councillor Housman. You don't have to carry it, so thank you. So just a couple of things I want to share that I didn't before. I was reminded that our municipal aggregation, which we fought hard to get approved through a DPU under the prior state administration that was not supportive of the actions of a whole lot of communities to want to save their electric ratepayers money. We were finally able to get that approved, and we're now saving, we've saved, I think I was reminded, $800,000 in the aggregate around the community over the first several months. Our residential, our residents are still saving money a year into the program. And that's really, you know, that was my goal. You know, we were looking to try to introduce a cleaner mix of supply, you know, a more renewable supply of electricity. But we weren't going to do it unless we could be, you know, pretty certain that there would be savings for our, your constituents and mine. And that's been, that's been the case. The other thing is, you know, I talked about how important it was that our former Sustainability Director, Ms. Keefe, really led the effort, co-led the effort to get the LED lights into the schools. And earlier on, she had led the effort for our multi-site solar arrays. And all that together is helping to cut the costs of the electricity that we do use. So these, you know, these are savings that repeat every day. And these are some of the things that we really, you know, we didn't, and we don't have the capacity to do all of this without them, just the reality of it. I'm confident in both in the ability of Mr. Ibrahim Lopez and also, I'm sorry, Mr. Lopez Hernandez, I'm going to give you his whole name, in his abilities and the ability of whoever we're able to bring on board during the course of this fiscal year to continue that trend of making sure that we get important work done and that the revenues that it brings in are revenues that really help the whole of our community. And I'm committed to making sure that we do fund those. And I think it's a bit of a crystal ball to suggest that we would not be able to annualize the cost of the new position when we do hire. You know, we are spending, we're proposing, at least, that we spend an additional seven-point, help me out, Mr. Ailes, just a shade under $7.8 million, because we're projecting that level of revenues this coming year. And, you know, we certainly anticipate new growth next year. Investments, as councillor Bowen said, you know, investments that we know are coming in our, you know, in our economic sector. We've got a lot of things, a lot of positives going on. So, you know, I have confidence, I also just need to say it again, it's been said before, I, for my whole life, have been a strong, the strongest proponent possible for the Beverly Public Schools. I attended them for all of my, you know, school career. I taught in the Beverly Public Schools. My mother taught in the Beverly Public Schools. I have been committed from the very first day that I served in office in 1993 as our state representative. I've always been committed to our kids, to our educators, to our families. And I think you see that, I know you see that. You know, we increased our school budget over 10 years by $24.5 million. When it was shown that that wasn't enough, with your support, with your strong support, we increased it by another $5.6 million last year. That was 8%. And the proposal in front of you is another $7.1 million for Beverly Public Schools, but almost $7.6 million for Beverly Children when you add in the tuitions out to a couple of other schools. And that, as councillor Housman said, was almost 97% of all the new spending this coming year. So, you know, there are needs everywhere. And your conversation earlier about, you know, whether or not there needs to be a bigger pie, right? The beginnings of that conversation, that's an important conversation. I think, I hear a desire from some to cut things so that we don't recapture the excess levy limit in this fiscal year. I think we need to recapture the excess levy limit. You know, we, like most communities, always go to the levy limit. Two and a half's been in place for over 40 years. The only two times that this city of Beverly did not go to the levy limit, we did it together, three years ago and two years ago, very specifically, very specifically because when commercial property values flatlined during COVID and have not bounced back, our residential values were going through the stratosphere into orbit. We all were feeling that, right? Because we kept hearing it from our constituents. We know ourselves, as we're, you know, as we're paying our own property taxes. So I think for the right reasons, I know for the right reasons, we collectively strongly supported not going all the way to the levy limit. I said to you a year ago at Budget Time, though, that we now need to, in order to make the commitment that our educators deserved and needed that we make, I said to you last year, I asked you last year, let's capture back about half of it in FY '25, and I'm almost certainly going to come back in FY '26 for the other half. And that's before you. And I think to make cuts in things that may end up putting an extra drag on cash reserves later in the fiscal year, I don't think that's wise. I think that would undermine our ability to replenish and carry cash reserves in a way that keeps them where they need to be for the next recession and that, in the meantime, allows us to do critically important things. You know that we're going to need to buy at least a couple of police cars this coming year. Right? And you know that we're going to need to continue to invest in roads and sidewalks. I think what, you know, what we put together, not without a whole lot of many, many months of collaborative efforts, was, I think, the right formula for this coming year. That's a whole lot more than you asked, councillor Housman. I'm sorry, but appreciate the chance to share those couple of things.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Rotendo.
Madam President, may I motion to move the question?
You may. So we do have a motion and a second on councillor Sweeney's proposed amendment. This is the reduction in line item. Councillor Sweeney, you'll correct me if I wrote it down wrong, please. The motion was to reduce line 1121151180 from $60,839 to $0. So motion and a second, all those in favor? All those opposed? So that fails three to six. And thank you, everyone, for keeping your hands up while I do my quick counting math. Councillor Sweeney, did you have any other proposed amendments that you intended to make this evening?
No, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Councillor St. Hilare, I know that you mentioned that you do, so I'd like to go to you before you start, just for my thinking. Are there other councillors who came prepared to make any proposed amendments or cuts tonight? Okay, councillor St. Hilare, we'll go to you, please.
Since we got the ball rolling earlier with the discussion on the Planning Department, I'd like to make a motion to amend line 5115, Associate Planner, and reduce it from $34,953 to zero. This budget line item has already been cut. This used to be a full-time position. We're now carrying six months of a position. We can live six months without this role being filled, in my experience. I think we can probably think about a year without it. Revisit it next year. It's not in the budget. It's not planned. Let's just cut it, add it to the list of other cuts that we could make and see this money reallocated for other priorities.
Thank you, councillor. Could you just give us your proposal one more time, just in the form of a motion also? It'll help me make sure I have it written down. Oh, Matt, will you unmute your microphone? Oh, sorry, councillor.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce line 5115 from $34,953 to zero.
Thank you. Is there a second on this one? So we have a second. Councillor St. Hilare, was there anything else that you wanted to say at this point on that one?
Nope.
Okay, councillor Housman, I saw your hand.
Yeah, two points, actually. Councillor St. Hilare, just to clarify sort of the overall scope, your proposed cuts, proposed budget amendments, would, I think you said, add up to, I turned the page, $310,000? Was that what the total was?
You may. Thank you, councillor.
Total was $331,729,000. That had included the Associate Planner, Constituent Services Director, Sustainability Director, the Assistant Sustainability Director in the DEIB position. With the decision we just made on the Assistant Sustainability Director, that brings the reduced total to $270,890 of what's remaining in my proposed cuts.
So if I may. So I appreciate the difficulty of bringing forth cuts and having suggestion, you know, making suggestions like that. And I appreciate the fact that we are going to need to do, have these conversations. So, you know, I appreciate putting the question on the table. I guess for me, there is a, maybe, management philosophy, sort of stepping back a little bit in terms of how we approach FY '28, excuse me, FY '27 in this budget, using this budget to plan for a budget that we're not going to see for a year from now. And so I appreciate that one way of doing that, to my initial point in my statement, which is, you know, unless we're talking $800,000, you know, we're not really making meaningful cuts. And so if you add councillor Sweeney's and your cuts together, you know, you sort of get to that point. And, you know, the council so far has said, you know, we're not comfortable with those cuts, which maybe only loads the dice for FY '27, right? But both councillor Bowen and councillor Feldman talked about, you know, looking up for opportunities in FY '27, for FY '27, excuse me, that will help preserve our services. Because what we're really talking about in cuts is reducing our services. And so the question, as I see it really, is can we, as a community, structure our revenues and our expenses in a way which not only meet what we want to do, meet our values, but also come together, right? We have to have a balanced budget. And so one thing we haven't really said incredibly directly here is about raising costs. We have, as a council and as a community, the opportunity to have the discussion about, are we going to raise school fees? Okay? Are we going to have an override? How, you know, do we want to do that in order to provide services? Or do we want to simply cut back on services? And sitting here tonight, I don't know what the community's answer to that is. And so I would really rather build the FY '27 budget after we pass this budget. I think the administration, I think the mayor has heard and Mr. Ailes has heard loud and clear that the council doesn't intend to just let this slip into a regular budget-building process, that we are serious about looking at what's coming down the road and saying, how do we get there? And I feel a lot more comfortable managing personnel decisions over time in a thoughtful manner than at the, you know, sort of the last scheduled day to balance our budget with this, you know, for the fiscal year coming forward. I don't think this is really the right way to make those kinds of management decisions by the council voting to cut positions tonight that start in a week or so. So I guess I'm really looking at this as, how do we approach this? And I'm comfortable saying, let's work on the FY '27 budget once we pass this one. I recognize that there is a, two things. I recognize that there's an argument to be made for, let's start now, let's, you know, just as a matter of minimizing the pain for next year, but I certainly am not there. The other thing I realize is that councillor Rotendo thinks I talk way too much. So I'll be quiet.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor St. Hilare and councillor Sweeney, please.
Yeah, I guess just to respond to those comments, councillor Housman, in some of the earlier comments about a bigger pie and more revenue and an override, we don't have a bigger pie. We have $173 million contained in this.
We have $173 million contained in this budget. This isn't make-believe land. That's where we are. And so punting it to next year feels like a punt. We're here, we're now. None of these positions existed five years ago. These aren't longstanding city services that are drastic cuts. You know, none of these positions existed five, 10 years ago. Some of these roles, frankly, we're not even sure exactly what we've accomplished in these areas. And so for me, you know, these are the choices we have, and I'm not in the camp of do nothing and punt till next year. I'm in the camp of let's take the action, the only action we can, which is to cut money and suggest to the mayor that it be reallocated for other funding. There's $0 in this budget for road and sidewalk funding, zero. And we're going to have two sustainability positions, all these other positions. I don't see how we sell that. I don't understand that.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Sweeney and councillor Feldman.
Thank you, Madam President. To address kind of the larger conversation, I think, you know, your points are well taken, councillor St. Hilaire, and to councillor Hausmann's point, I don't disagree with you that this isn't an ideal way to approach budgeting, having the council consider cuts with seven days to go between now and the start of the fiscal year. But that's the reality of what happens if we receive a budget from the mayor, and there are concerns on the council's end about the long-term sustainability of the budget. And to the point about FY27, I think it is short-sighted to go on a year-to-year basis and assume that we're going to be able to find the funding to cover ourselves in FY27 when property taxes are capped. The only options we really have, to the points that have been brought up, are the, what I view as the absolute last measure, the override, and then the more options that we might need to more readily examine are raising fees or otherwise trying to bring in new revenues at a smaller magnitude. But it is absolutely, I think, prudent to make tweaks to FY26, even if the budget proposal before us is balanced, because of the concerns with the structural deficit that we're facing in FY27. Specific to this proposal, and I appreciate you bringing it up, councillor St. Hilaire, I, as I mentioned with the assistant sustainability director, and then through that proposal into my issue with how the sustainability director position is funded, I don't think it is a good practice to fund a position that you know you're going to keep in the budget beyond this fiscal year at half a salary, just because it's vacant, when, once you fill it, you're going to need to find that full salary for the following fiscal year, assuming that the position is retained. And so I don't think that this position should be funded at 50%. I think if it's a necessary position, we should have funded it at 100% of the budget. Obviously, the mayor's proposal does not do that, so we have to make do with what's in front of us. That brings me back to the question you asked when we were discussing the assistant sustainability position, councillor Hausmann, which is why this one and not the assistant planning position or the associate planning position. And so the reason that I don't think we should reduce this position kind of goes to the point that councillor St. Hilaire brought up about, well, why don't we just take a one-year hiatus, for lack of a better term, from having this position and then see where we are in FY27? Things are only going to get worse for us financially in FY27. If we remove a position from the budget, it needs to be done with the understanding that we probably won't have the funding in FY27 to add that position back. And so why I propose the assistant sustainability director position removal, for the reasons that I already cited, was that I think, long-term, we could have had a model without that position. I don't see us being able to sustain the work of the planning department without this position. So as Ms. Nguyen said during the meeting, this position, when filled, staffs two statutory boards in our city and also helps with a handful of other projects that the planning department has that really can't be outsourced to other departments. In the previous conversation, we kind of talked about technical areas of expertise and the role that some other departments do in helping the work of the sustainability department. That's not really the case with the planning department. It usually is staffed by folks with particular degrees. And when I think about projects like the design standards, which I think is a necessary change that we're going to need to make to our zoning ordinances that have not been introduced, even though we are years beyond when we thought we would have them introduced, and I understand Ms. Nguyen stated how the MBTA community's kind of disrupted that. But just to tie that back to why I think this is a worthwhile position, it's clear that that work isn't going to stop. I think we would have been better off fully funding this position instead of kicking the can down the road, as was currently proposed. The mayor proposed to fund half the year's position, and so we are either left to keep it or cut it. And with that in mind, I don't think it's wise to cut this position if we know that we need it in the budget for future fiscal years. So that's why I'll be voting against this cut. And to answer your question, that's why I proposed the other assistant sustainability reduction instead of this reduction, even though both positions were funded in this proposal in a similar manner. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sweeney. Councillor Feldman, I know you said you're set for now. Councillor Hausmann?
If I just may call on Mr. Perry for a moment?
Mr. Perry, please, if you would go to the podium. Thank you.
In one sense, this is a very simple conversation. In order to make the balance, excuse me, for FY27, we already have a balanced budget for FY26 if we accept this one. For FY27, we can either reduce costs or we can raise revenues. And raising revenues is not a popular conversation, because people don't want to spend more money for services. But I don't know that the council has really invited the community into the conversation. And so I don't really know the answer as to whether or not the community would be willing to sustain services by raising fees. Now, Mr. Perry, correct me or augment what I'm saying, I think you have said at different points that one way to address the predicted structural deficit is fees. We could raise fees. I mean, we already know the trash fee is going to probably have to go up. We know water and sewer rates are going up. There are school fees that are on the table that we, as a community, have been very, very proud and worked really, really hard to get to eliminating. But in a difficult fiscal environment, I think we should have the conversation of, do we cut a lot of positions that no one wants to see cut, or do we pay for them? So can you elaborate just a little bit on what you think the dollar figure might be available that could be raised in fees that would be a one-way or a blend of one-way in addressing FY27?
On the trash side, it's about 3.8 million for the entire expenditure, of which I believe approximately 1.2 comes in in fees. So you have a net of 1.6, I think, in potential existing fees on that one. But keep in mind, the contract is up next year, and I certainly think it's fair to say that that's going to go up quite a bit. So, you know, there's that. On the school side, I did have an opportunity. The school business manager met with the school committee in March, I think it was, and I had, I actually have the slides with me. I saw the work they did. There are certainly fees over there, you know, things like the preschool, non-IEP students, the afternoon kindergarten students could be an option, I believe, and I, please, if I'm wrong, stop me here, but I think it's been almost a decade or so on the athletic fees, but if I'm wrong in that, please correct me here. It's been a while, I believe. Transportation, there's a whole bunch of fees on the school side that the school committee certainly could raise on. They don't even need the city council. They could just do that on their own. I don't know, anywhere from, I don't know, 1 to 2 million maybe over there could be raised. That's a lot. Puts it in position on the parents, but, you know, the flip side to that is they're the consumer of the product, too. So, you know, those are the two areas that I see on the fee side that could be raised for next year's budget, I guess, if that answers your question.
Yeah, I think it does. I mean, I guess the point I'm making is that, from my point of view, I don't know that the community's been invited into that conversation of cuts versus increasing revenues. So it seems appropriate to me to sort of be clear, we talk, we want the administration to be transparent, we should be transparent. We've been talking about this. And so part of my sort of approach to the cuts, which I think is fair and appropriate for councillor St. Hilaire and councillor Sweeney to bring cuts up for us to discuss, because we are all really very serious about what we're facing. And so really, I think it's entirely appropriate. How we vote tonight, at least for me, is sort of that management philosophy of, do we work on the FY27 budget as we're getting ready for it, or do we try to really do a lot of work sort of on a rough-and-ready management way this evening?
Yeah. Just a couple of comments. Ms. Visic just whispered in my ear here. I wasn't aware of it, but I guess they raised some of the fees for the preschool for this year coming, and I guess they're planning, and please stop me if I'm, next year, they're looking at the preschool stuff. There certainly are other areas they could explore, in my view. There was an official of the community, I'll keep nameless, I had met with in the last couple of months. We joked that we should start talking about the FY27 budget on July 1st, and I kind of at least said, let's wait till after the 4th of July, you can have a beer and a hot dog, and start talking about it. But yeah, I do believe, I've talked to several of you, I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to Mr. Ailes, I've talked to a lot of people. We got to begin earlier next year. This is nothing, in my view, compared to what you may be facing next year, and I'm extremely concerned as your budget analyst about that.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bowen?
Thank you. I think I would approach proposals to cut staff in a similar way to other councillors who've spoken, that I don't see that as sending the signal and pressure to reevaluate different ways of thinking about the budget in the same way that reducing a capital outlay line would, and agree that, for all the reasons we've shared, the conversation is due. In terms of things we can do as a council, would love to suggest that we use the next financial forecast process as a process that we, as a council, manage and invite more public feedback through that process than has been necessary in some years, given what we'll be facing. Often, that's sort of a smaller, more technical conversation, and I think that's needed, and many years, that's sufficient. And I think that process has to be completed by December by our rules, but can start anytime and can involve any number of different types of formats, and would love to work with the council on using that process or another one to be really intentional and really drive some of that process, because I think part of the feedback that I've gotten from people across the community is that there is that tension, and I hear much more a desire to not just preserve services, but improve services or make services fit what we need better, and really celebrating departments that are making those moves, whether or without new resources, and feeling the pressure of costs on all of us in all ways, so that, like, natural tendency to not want to see property tax bills go up or other costs go up is very present. And I hear more of the desire to improve services than to cut back. So I would love for us to have a formal process to really dig into that and make sure that we get all the best ideas on how to do that.
Thank you, councillor. I can tell councillor Tendo is ready to move the question. I actually think we are ready to vote as well on this one. We do have a motion and a second on councillor St. Hilaire's proposed reduction in the associate planner line item from 34,953 to zero. And so all those in favor? All those opposed? That one fails 1-8. Thank you, councillor. Councillor St. Hilaire, you have others. We'll go to you.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would make a motion to cut line 578, sorry, I can't read this, 2-0, the reserve for appropriation, reserve for unforeseen. As we've discussed in the past, this budget, not very long ago, was 50,000 or so. It's ballooned over 200,000 to 50,000, 225,000 it lands at this year. This is as defined unbudgeted money. I suggest we cut this money to zero and urge the mayor to reallocate it to other city priorities. The 225,000, I feel like, is a completely arbitrary number. It represents another one of the safety valves, I think Mr. Ailes has referred to, and I make that motion.
Thank you, councillor. And so just to make sure I have it right, 225,000 reduced to zero.
Correct.
Thank you. Is there a second? I heard a second from councillor Crowley. Thank you. Any discussion from councillors on this one? Councillor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I certainly agree with the sentiment that councillor St. Hilaire is expressing, and I know we've already discussed at length concerns about the FY27 budget, so I'm not going to rehash those. Specific for this proposal, the reason that I would be against cutting from the reserves in particular, well, I guess is twofold. One is we need to have funding available in case of unforeseen emergencies, and that's especially so during the period between the start of the fiscal year and when free cash is certified later in the fall. So without having the flexibility to make that type of transfer, we could really be handicapping ourselves in the event that there was an expense that came up in August that we didn't have ability to fund within the budget, and then limited options as free cash is still in the process of being certified. Second, this is one area of the budget where there is more transparency in terms of how funds are being spent. The administration needs to come before the council, propose a transfer, and the council needs to then discuss the merit of the transfer before voting in favor or not. And so essentially, the way that I view this is a matter of retaining flexibility for that period where free cash is unavailable, and I think the council still has the ability to vet proposals in ways that we don't with the capital outlay line, which we discussed at length earlier. One thing I do want to, if I may, Madam President, pose through you to Mr. Perry about the point councillor St. Hilaire made with the amount increasing over the year. I know we've had this discussion before, but just to summarize it again in the context of this specific proposal before us tonight, it's my understanding that many communities increase the amounts of their reserves as their budgets increase to try to maintain some ratio of reserve to overall budget. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
And with that, would you say that this amount is appropriate, given the size of the city's budget?
I did raise my hand. The council president did recognize me, so I did hope to address. This is our annual dance between myself and councillor St. Hilaire. I've said this the last couple of years. I'll say the same thing again. It is my recommendation to you as your budget analyst, you should not reduce this budget. I think the only two areas I would ever get up and speak to weigh in on would be this and debt, because we can't default. But beyond that, I would never weigh in whatever cuts you deem appropriate, I deem appropriated your wisdom in decision-making. But we know, as councillor Sweeney indicated, there is always going to be unforeseen circumstances. We can't predict it. I can't tell you how much snow is going to happen. We just talked about trying to make cuts for the McPherson Center, and this was an area we could have considered as a contingency, though that didn't go. But the bottom line to it, every community has a reserve for unforeseen. In the cities, it's a reserve for unforeseen. In small towns like Barksford, they have a reserve fund overseen by the finance committee. Every community does this. It's good financial practice. I'd be abdicating my fiduciary responsibilities to you as city councillors, as well as the city as a whole, if I didn't get up here and advise you not to do this. So I recommend you not adopt the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Other discussion from councillors. All right, so we have a motion and a second on this one. This is the motion to reduce the line item for reserve for unforeseen from $225,000 to zero. All those in favor? All those opposed? That motion fails 1-8. Councillor St. Hilaire, we'll go back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. For those keeping track, in addition to councillor Sweeney's amendments and those that I've proposed tonight so far, that's $470,792 of possible spending. I further make a motion to reduce line 57811, reserve for non-union salary increases from 150,000 to zero. Councillors, as you remember, this was one item we agreed on last year in terms of reducing this number from 200 to 150 last year. It's carried. It's carried again at 150 this year. As a reference to my opening comments, I feel like we had a historically bad year last year as a community and as a local government, and I don't think it's appropriate to be handing out 5%, 6%, 7%, 8% salary increases to management staff while we're cutting off school positions and zeroing out road and sidewalk budgets. Thank you.
Is there a second on this one? Is that you, councillor Feldman? Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Did I see your hand, councillor Sweeney?
I guess.
Okay.
I know I've been going first a lot, so I was going to try to wait for my colleagues here.
I appreciate that. I feel like you may as well go ahead and jump in as folks are thinking.
Thank you, Madam President. I hesitate to vote in favor of this, despite the realities that we talk about with every one of these proposals, because I would be concerned about two years in a row, reducing funding available to make sure that our non-union positions keep pace with peer communities. So to that end, I would like to pose a question, whether it's to Mr. Ailes or otherwise, could you further elaborate on where, in terms of, so once this, if approved, reserve is applied, what are we looking at for many of the positions impacted? Is it 8% to 10% increases, or is it more of a 3% cost of living adjustment type of increase that you would expect to see when this funding, if approved, is allocated?
So this value would represent roughly 3.25% on average to the 30-some-on employees that this pool is designated to cover. That's very consistent with all of our contracts that have been settled in the previous year for this coming year, which range anywhere from a 3% to some contracts have even a 4% in there, and then you factor in steps and such, so there's other units of employment that have similar types of increases already baked in to their contract.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. And with that, I think that's barely enough to keep up with cost of living increases, and I would be concerned, once we identify the positions we need to keep as a city, I think it's important that we are competitive, and I see us trying to maintain many positions and keeping the salaries artificially low as a flawed way to approach trying to manage our budget. I think that would just cause more turnover and lead to more increased costs for the city, so that's why I'll be voting against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bowen.
Thank you. And last year, I did support that reduction, in part because of the desire to keep things somewhat in line with where union employees were in their increases. So would be open to some reduction that still keeps within that range. It sounds like we're right on that line this year. But I did have a question for this line and the transfer or reserve for the DPS realignment that's still anticipated based on studying roles and sort of how to attract and retain staff to those roles. Given where they're positioned in the budget, did those just transfer right in for use by the department based on this action, or do they still need an additional vote to move from the reserve to the relevant department?
So where the purpose is called out in the reserve specifically, that transfer can occur without further action. This is the action to approve that. So for something like an unforeseen, where it's truly unforeseen, we would come back and request a reappropriation at that point, because it wasn't voted for to use for that purpose in this setting.
And then, may also be a question for you, Mr. Ailes, sorry. For both of those items, are those anticipated to happen in the first half of this fiscal year, or are they budgeted on the assumption that they happen later?
They will both most certainly happen the first half of the fiscal year.
Okay. I ask because there are, as we've discussed, other budget lines where we've delayed that decision until later in the year to make this budget balance better. Was that factored into either of those budget lines in thinking about how to prepare for them?
For the non-union employees, the effective date is July 1. So even though the decision will be made maybe a month or two into the fiscal year, it is a retro back to July 1 salary adjustment. With the DPS salary adjustment, that retro will go back to July 1 of 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Thank you, councillor. Are there other discussion from councillors on this one? Okay, we have a motion and a second, so all those in favor of councillor St. Hilary's proposed adjustment, which would reduce the line item for non-union salaries from $150,000 to zero, all those in favor? All those opposed? That motion fails 1-8. Councillor St. Hilary, I'll go back to you. Do you have others?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend line.
Oh, councillor St. Hilary, will you unmute your microphone? Sorry.
I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to amend line 51891 in the executive department budget. Line item is expenses, reduce it from $18,500 to zero. This line item has been used historically for expenses for travel across the country to various conferences. The mayor discussed in our budget hearing, I don't think that's appropriate, given the budget environment this year, and would suggest zeroing that line item out.
So that's the motion from councillor St. Hilary. Is there a second? Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Councillor Sweeney. Although I appreciate your slow hand raise.
Trying. I encourage my colleagues to speak up on these. So thank you, Madam President. As everybody here knows, this was an account that I raised in our meeting with the mayor earlier in the budget process, out of concern from a December 2024 report in the New Bedford Light on Mayor Cahill's spending over $7,200 on out-of-state travel in 2024. And during that discussion, I think I made clear that I did disagree with the mayor about the value of attending some of the conferences, like the Aspen Institute Conference in Miami Beach. However, the mayor stated that he paid for that out of his own pocket, and I believe him in that regard. And so if that expense was paid for from Mayor Cahill's own personal funds, then that means that the $7,200 that were spent would have been spent on the other two conferences that the mayor cited, the two U.S. Conference of Mayors conferences, and I believe it was one in DC and the other in Kansas City. And so the mayor said in our conversation that there's value to the city when the mayor attends conferences with fellow municipal leaders to learn about best practices and developments at the state and federal level. And as I mentioned during that dialogue, I agree with that. I myself am very active in the Massachusetts Municipal Association for that same reason, to learn and to advocate for Beverly's needs while bringing back some best practices here to the city council. So I am opposed to cutting the entirety of this budget. One, because I do think we should facilitate some amount of the travel required for the mayor to advocate for the city, but I also know that this account funds expenses aside from just travel. I could see a proposal to reduce part of this account as in order, and I'd be willing to recommend a reduction of $3,600 with the rationale that I think one out-of-state conference makes sense, two is a little excessive, and so that would be the reduction to essentially bring back a little bit the expense line, but it's small and I really think it's inconsequential other than symbolic reasons. So if there is a desire to reduce this account, I'd be willing to make that amendment. I am not in favor of voting for the entire reduction as currently presented.
Thank you, councillor Sweeney. Other comments? Councillor Bowen.
Thank you. And just wanted to clarify if we were talking about the other expenses, or sorry, expenses under personnel services, or the other charges and expenses?
51891.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Other comments or discussion from members of the council? All right, we have a motion and a, sorry, a motion and a second. This is on the proposed amendment to reduce that line item from $18,500 to zero. All those in favor? All those opposed? That motion fails 2-7. Councillor St. Hilary.
As I mentioned earlier, I had proposed some cuts to the mayor's office staff. In addition to the Assistant Sustainability Director, which we had discussed earlier, there were three other positions that I'd like to include as a package together, if that's possible. So I would like to reduce collectively lines 51141, 51140, and 51137. Their combined total is $235,937. I'd like to reduce those lines to zero. This would leave the mayor's office with Chief of Staff and Executive Assistant, Grants Director, and the Assistant Sustainability Director, we discussed earlier. As I mentioned, I think there's other priorities that are being unfunded, that we are fundamentally responsible for, and while these positions may be serving a need, in my opinion, they are nice-to-haves, they are positions we've recently added, and in my opinion, can reevaluate as we enter better budgetary times in the future.
Councillor St. Hilary, I'm sorry, I just missed the last bit of the total number, so $235,900 and?
37.
That's what I thought.
37.
Thank you. So is there a second to that one? Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Hausmann.
Sorry, Kim. 51137, 51140, and 51141.
You're looking still, councillor Hausmann, I didn't know if you had a follow-up.
And for councillor Hausmann, that would equate to $875,229 in cuts that I've supported tonight or proposed, which I think could have done a real, some real good.
Is there other discussion from councillors on this one? Councillor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. So to councillor St. Hilary's point, the mayor's office budget has increased fairly significantly, even in the six fiscal years now since FY20, and certainly since the current administration came into office 12 years ago. So I understand, when looking for reductions to help address the structural deficit in FY27, why councillor St. Hilary would point to these positions. As I mentioned in the conversation about the reduction to the associate planner, I think it's important that if we're reducing a position, we're doing so because we don't think the position is necessary or can't be afforded going forward, and that that's a reduction that we would want to make and sustain in the future. And while I am concerned with how these positions are being managed, given the increase in capacity in the mayor's office and the corresponding increase in direct reports to the mayor, I do think that there is value in the individual positions. We discussed the value of sustainability, so I'm not going to rehash that. I do think there's value in, obviously, at least one position. In terms of the Constituent Services Director, I actually would like to see this position better utilized for communication. I think that's an area that's been lacking currently, and I do think that the cities that communicate well with their residents and are intentional about putting out newsletters and social media updates and engaging with resources like BevCam, they have a point person in some capacity facilitating that, and I believe that this position, even if the role isn't currently defined that way, could certainly be utilized in that fashion, and that would, I think, address a need that I hear very frequently from residents about the lack of communication coming from the city currently. So I think there's value there. The last position of, I believe, the three that you mentioned, councillor St. Hilary, was the DEI Director position. I know that we had a discussion with Ms. Fahari a few weeks ago about some of the progress that has been made in that position, and I do have some concerns with what I view as a lack of progress since the position has been created. I think some of that can be chalked up to the fact that there was a turnover in personnel, and that there have been two people to occupy that role since it was created. I would be concerned about the reduction of the position at this point in time, because I'm worried that it would be a little premature to remove the position before we have a better idea of what has been accomplished and what work lies ahead for the city. And so I think with that, there is definitely a need for a clearer direction, and so I would encourage the mayor to work with Ms. Fahari to create a focused one-year action plan that sets tangible goals to deliver upon areas that were flagged in our city's equity audit, and that's what I worry we're missing right now. And without that tangible action plan, I don't think we can then have the measurable benchmarks and see the results that we can point to, to either say this is a worthwhile position to sustain, or that it's not. And without that analysis, I don't think we can really make an informed decision about whether or not we should keep the position at this point in time. I do think there's potential for the role to address some areas in our city that we really do need to work on, under the umbrella of equity in particular, like expanding language access, modernizing our facilities so that they're ADA compliant. I know that there's been great work going on to close the digital divide. I know the library and council on aging have done a lot of work with Ms. Fahari on that, and I think continuing that's important. And then just generally making sure that we are active in engaging with communities that otherwise might not typically engage with City Hall. I think those are all worthwhile initiatives. I would encourage the mayor to work with Ms. Fahari to map out a much more tangible action plan than what we saw a few weeks ago, but I do think it's premature at this point in time to make a final determination on whether or not we should sustain this position. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Feldman.
Yes, thank you. I agree with pretty much everything councillor Sweeney has stated, and I do see how, over the last several years, in some ways, the creation of some of these positions was really under the executive budget, because we were responding quickly to a need, and that's where we can put it quickly, when the community needed, you know. The constituent services, I agree, it's, we could use a department of constituent services in terms of response and helping address a wide variety of constituent concerns. And with that, with the creation of these new jobs, I think there are, there will be growing pains and things that we need to address in terms of growing into these positions, but I don't, I do think, I agree that it would be premature to eliminate them based on not seeing exactly the results in a tough year that we, that we want to see immediately, and that, I want to remind everyone that every one of these positions is, was really created over the last couple of years to directly respond to our constituents and our taxpayers' requests and respond, and responding to it proactively by creating positions that would address some of the community's concerns. And so in that vein, I think these are valuable, and again, they're valuing the positions and the departments, not necessarily the current state or work of them, it's what we can work with going forward and creating the space in the budget for those priorities. So I would not recommend cutting these budget line items.
Thank you, councillor. Other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second on this proposal to reduce this combined three line items for a total of $235,937, reduction to zero. All those in favor? All those opposed? That motion fails 1-8. Councillor St. Hilary?
That is all I have this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And councillor Spang, I know you let me know that you also have a proposed reduction that you'd like to make, so go to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Mine is on page 126, is account number 1100659730, that's the transfer to the sanitation enterprise for covering trash costs, and my proposal is to reduce that by $150,000, which would And my proposal is to reduce that by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would bring the new total to two million three hundred and twenty-five thousand and forty-five dollars.
Counselor Spang, could you just repeat your motion again, just for my notes?
Yes. My motion is to reduce the amount allocated in the transfer to sanitation enterprise fund, number one one zero zero six five nine seven three zero, by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which brings the new total to two million three hundred and twenty-five thousand and forty-five dollars.
Thank you. All right, so there's the motion, is there a second on this one? Counselor Rotundo.
Question for you, Mr. Ailes. The reduction in this, are we contractually obligated to pay this money for this transfer? I know we have the fees, but I also know we're in the third year of our contract, so this fund that's being allocated for this line item, is it specifically because it's our contractual obligation, or is it discretionary?
So, yeah, I'm a, I'm a little, maybe if I could hear a little bit more about what the intent is, not to pose a question to Counselor Spang, but if I, Madam President...
No, I appreciate that, because I was going to go back to Counselor Spang for the next person to be able to speak, so she could share more, and so Counselor Spang, we'll go right to you.
Thank you. My thoughts in doing and proposing this are that we've heard a lot about how the trash contract is up for renewal next year, it will probably change in a lot of ways. The fees that we charge for trash have not increased, it's my understanding, at least for a very long time. So rather than hitting a year next year where there might be large increases, to increase the amount of fees by, that would be, by my math, a 12% increase on the fees, which I don't know if that is a, I don't know if this is a possible vehicle for that mechanism.
Okay, so thank you for that, that's helpful to understand. So to kind of put this in a, in a slightly different frame, the proposed amendment would reduce the amount coming in from the general fund. However, to Counselor Rotundo's question, the expenditure side of the equation, which is the sanitation enterprise fund, is pretty fixed. There are some assumptions in there on tonnage that will incinerate and such, but it's based on historical values, so it's, it's pretty close. And in order to support those contractual obligations for the curbside pickup, the expected incineration for the tonnage of the solid waste, as well as the cost for tonnage removal for the recycling, we need the full value of the revenues we're proposing in there. So if it doesn't come from the general fund, to Counselor Spang's point, it would then need to come from increased fee structure, which, I, I don't know the legalities to this, there, there hasn't been yet anything proposed or before you in terms of a fee structure. So I guess if this were to pass, it would need to reduce the enterprise fund as well by the corresponding revenues to come in, and then we would need to figure out a solution at some point in the near future to try to fund the difference.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Ailes.
On the fly. So I, I think that's how we could do it.
Thank you. Counselor Spang, I'm just looking into you, I didn't know if you wanted to be able to have any further conversation on that.
I guess in light of that, I would withdraw my motion. Sounds like it's not, we're not able to restructure fees in this scenario tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Spang. So you're withdrawing your motion, although I, I do think your opening this conversation puts on the table before us for future conversation, this question about fees, which Counselor Hausmann had already... Thank you. Counselor Bowen.
Thank you. Just to, to explore the question, it sounds like if we were to reduce the line in the general budget to transfer to the enterprise fund, we would also need to pass an enterprise fund expenditure budget tonight that was reduced by the same amount to balance. If we were to propose a, a cut to either the curbside pickup or incineration contract lines, would that then prompt a conversation before we had spent it out for the year and give us several months to talk about whether to start increasing fees even before a renegotiation, or, or would that sort of lock us into not being able to pay a contract we've already signed?
And just for those following on BEV CAM, Mr. Ailes' response was the latter, which was lock us into not being able to pay a contract we'd already signed. Thank you, Counselor Bowen. So Counselor Spang is withdrawing that motion, which means that we don't have a motion before us, but I do hear us raising the question about fees broadly, and this fee particularly is sanitation contract, is that for renegotiation? So I think it's worth our bookmarking these thoughts. These are all conversations that seem like they are before us. Were there any other counselors who were prepared to make a proposed cut this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we still have the original motion and second on the floor before us, and that was the motion and second on Order one seventy-one itself. Is there any concluding discussion or comments from members of the council on the, the main vote on Order one seventy-one? If I may, Vice President Crowley, could I ask you to switch places with me? Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Crowley. I thought Counselor Rotundo was going to look over at this page, my pages, and get nervous. I will not believe we're the point, but for those who are avid followers of the City Council, I know you may already know this, but I always like to explain the process so that those who are following or watching on BEV CAM, so that we can all be on the same page. And so as part of the process that governs how our meetings work and run, one of the rules of the council is that the council president conducts and leads meetings from the president's chair, but does not share an opinion on matters before the council for a vote from that chair. And so when the council president wishes to speak and offer an opinion on a matter before the council for a vote, switches places with the vice president so that the president is then speaking as a counselor. So that's the reason that I asked Vice President Crowley to trade chairs with me, and the council president can't return to the president's chair until that matter is concluded. And so Vice President Crowley, thank you. Vice President Crowley will call for any last comments after I speak, and also will call for the final vote. If you watch the City Council avidly, you may also know that I don't always ask Vice President Crowley to switch places with me ahead of votes, but there are some topics where I, I feel that it's important to add my voice to those of other counselors, my council colleagues, and to be able to share with residents my thoughts on the matter before us. And for me, the proposed FY twenty-six budget is one such topic where I feel it's important for residents to get to hear my thoughts on it as well. Before I go on further, I also want to pause and echo some of the thanks that counselors shared at the beginning of our conversation this evening, which is thanks for everyone who played a part in, worked on, helped to prepare for, created the digital online version for much improved resident access of, attended meetings about, spoke at public hearings about, emailed your elected officials about, or took seriously and cared deeply about this budget process. Thank you for the work, the care, and the time shown. Thank you to members of the public for your thoughtful and serious engagement, your questions, your insight, and your care. Our community is always better served and stronger, and discussion is richer and more expansive when we fully and seriously engage the questions at the heart of our community together. And as we've heard tonight, there is no doubt that the upcoming fiscal year and its corresponding proposed budget represent a challenge, and that the FY twenty-seven budget will represent a greater challenge still. Certainly, for my part, this is the most challenging fiscal year ahead with which we have had to contend as a city since before my first term on the council in 2018, although we also know that as a community, we have had to grapple with other difficult years in the past. And I say this not with a sense of pessimism, nor impending doom, and nor do I think I heard that from other counselors this evening, but with a sense of realism, to acknowledge our present reality, that we might confront it honestly together, and in some way, I also say it with a sense of hope, which may sound odd, except that I believe that understanding and looking honestly at our challenges, which I've heard counselors express this evening, that we don't want to hide from the fact that this fiscal year and the one to follow will be difficult, and we need to grapple with that seriously, those also create opportunities. And we've seen both the conversation this evening and also conversations that we've articulated will be ahead for us, I think, as part of that opportunity. And as I have learned from our excellent Beverly Public Schools educators, looking at challenges honestly and grappling with them invites us to have a growth mindset, to consider what we may not have done or be doing yet, but can work to do, as we strive to tackle challenges, create real and lasting change, and to continue to address our needs as a city. Last Wednesday evening, we had the opportunity here in this chamber to hear from many members of the public in our public hearing on the proposed FY twenty-six budget, voices that express with concern the needs of our children, our students, our educators, and our schools, as well as voices that expressed with concern the importance of delivering city services, ensuring our public safety departments are able to respond when called upon, and recognizing that our revenues are stretched when it comes to meeting our obligations and our expenses. The words of those who spoke have remained with me, and I thank all who shared and spoke. And to our Beverly educators who spoke, I think you could tell from the questions raised by the council that you were heard, and that I believe, and we believe, that there is work we can do together yet to continue to strive to address concerns that have been articulated, to support Beverly's children, to prepare for fiscal uncertainty ahead in FY twenty-six and twenty-seven, a situation, as Counselor Bowen alluded to, which Beverly is not alone. And municipalities are grappling with uncertain federal-level, federal-level funding, which is impacting our commonwealth, and pressures of expenses that have outpaced our revenues for the, for the reasons that we've heard this evening. I've also been thinking about a line from one of the speakers who spoke in that public hearing, Ms. Newton specifically, comments that she spoke and that have stayed with me since she said that particular line. She said, "If voting against the budget is not the right path to meet our challenges," which I'm taking a little liberty just for the context, but she said, "If voting against the budget is not the right path, then find the right path." Find the right path has stuck with me since she spoke those words, and I thank her for those words if she's listening this evening. I take that as invitation to continue to work creatively, seriously, and thoughtfully, to take seriously the needs of our schools, our educators, our children, and to take seriously the needs of our community and its infrastructure and the services that we deliver. Find the right path. Continue to hold a growth mindset. In that same meeting, Counselor Bowen reminded us that passing the budget does not mean the end of what we do to strive to meet the needs across departments and across our community. Instead, it really is the beginning and continued work of ours as elected leaders. And I believe that that was one of the comments to which we should hold fast, because we are being invited to continue work, not end it, when we vote on the budget. To work creatively, to address needs where and when possible, to increase revenues to meet needs where and when possible, and yes, to be faithful stewards. I know we had proposed cuts today, and they did not pass, and yet those conversations and our continued work to that end, I think, is incredibly important. Find the right path. We are not all the way there yet, but this is not the end of the work. Indeed, I believe tonight's vote on the proposed FY twenty-six budget is but a beginning. As Counselor Feldman said earlier in this meeting, she and I have undertaken conversation together with our assistant solicitor, now our city solicitor, congratulations with O'Nixon, for her assistance with research on the legal process and procedures to explore together with the council, posing a proposition two and a half override, and working with our fellow counselors to move a question such as that to a ballot question, allowing Beverly's voters to consider it, or, as Counselor Hausmann pointed out earlier, this is one of the ways that we invite the community into a conversation about what revenues, fees, we could expand to address our outpacing expenses, and where the community is not ready to move. I believe that we are called to be creative and to take seriously the work of considering how we expand our revenues. Some of that conversation began this evening with questions about where we might need to shift in terms of fees, or Counselor Spang asking us to begin that process of thinking about what it will look like to maybe reconsider how we afford our sanitation contract. I believe that these are very real avenues and possibilities that are available to us, and that we are at a point where we must consider it together and invite the community in, as other counselors have said, for our schools, for our infrastructure, for our city departments, for all of us, as we face a challenging fiscal moment. And so I hope that we recognize the call to meet it in ways that may look different and push us to think differently than we have in the past. After careful and long consideration, I found that for myself, I worried that voting against the budget would not get us to the solutions that we need and that I heard people asking for, and I take what they were asking for seriously, as I know do my council colleagues. And so I do plan on voting in favor of the budget, but as the beginning of a path and not the end. So thank you. Thank you, colleagues, for your indulgence as well. Thank you. Vice President Crowley.
Thank you, Madam President. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments on this order? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries eight to one.
Thank you, Vice President Crowley.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Vice President Crowley, thank you, counselors, thank you to all those who have been part of this process. I would like to entertain a motion, I know this has been a long night, just for a two-minute recess, so, just so I can get a quick moment of clarity about one final vote matter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.